Sale?
Oh, okay.
I need to. I wish that I would feel better.
Good evening and welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting for May 23rd. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the robe?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, we don't have any proclamations or special reports, so we're going to go right to the consent agenda. And why don't you go ahead and read. We have one person signed up, Carol Taylor. So Carol, if you could get ready, we'll have you come up once she is ready.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, contract renewal 104 with Mitchell Humphrey, St. Louis, Missouri for annual maintenance and support of the city's financial management system from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, $101,585 plus tax. Number two, contract renewal 204 with Dresser Rand Company Houston, Texas for turbine generator services at the waste energy facility from May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2023. Estimated cost not to exceed $1,800,000 plus tax and a 10% administrative fee. Number three, recommendations to list the following on the Spokane Register of Historical Places: A, Hubert and Bertha Lloyd House, 451 West Shoshone Place; B, Charles and Maud Kemp House, 404 West Sumner Avenue; C, Daniel Paul Building, 823 West Second Avenue; number four, little bit of Cameron Riley LLC Spokane Valley, Washington for Cycle 9 School Safety Projects, $1,597,275.50. An administrative reserve of $159,727.55, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. Item number five is deferred to June 6, 2022. Number six, report of the mayor of Penny Nate, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through May 13, 2022. Total $4,930,157.73 with Parks and Library claims approval by their respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $4,234,513.90. B payroll claims of previously approved obligations through May 14, 2022, $7,953,041.92. Item number seven, city council meeting minutes for May 9 and May 12, 2022.
All right, thank you. And we have, as I mentioned, Carol Taylor, who is appearing by phone. If you want to hit star three, Carol. Are you out there, Carol? Again, hit star three. Carol, welcome to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to talk about the water restrictions.
Oh, that is not the consent agenda. That's not the part of the agenda we're on right now.
Oh, it isn't.
But we will put you on.
Which one is?
That's coming up.
Go ahead.
A little bit later, but we will write you down for that.
Okay.
And you can call in when I call your name for that.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as read indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda is adopted. That leads us to a special budget ordinance.
Ordinance is amending ordinance number C 36161 passed by the city council December 13, 2021 and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declared an emergency and appropriating funds in ordinance C 36212, Fleet Services Fund. Number one, increased revenue by $264,259. A of the increased revenue, $264,259, is from interfund fuel sales from other city departments. Number two, increased appropriation by $140,000. A of the increased appropriation, $140,000, is provided solely for supplies and equipment related to clean fuel infrastructure reserve expenses in the Fleet Services Department. This action arises from the creation of the Clean Fuel Infrastructure Reserve Plan.
All right, we have one person signed up to speak. I'll try to get this name right. I believe it's Alex Collier. Come on up. This is for the... No, but this is for the fleet fund. Do you want to speak on the next one?
Yes.
Okay, stay close. It's coming. All right. All right, so we don't have anyone signed up to speak on this. Any council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. And that will get us to the next special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36213, General Fund. Number one, add one exempt confidential executive assistant position in the mayor's office from 1 to 2. Number two, transfer $29,000 in budget authority from the police advisory, policy advisor position in the mayor's office to the executive assistant position. Number three, increase the appropriation in the general fund mayor's office by approximately $43,900. A of the increased appropriation, approximately $15,300, is provided solely for salary and benefits related to the executive assistant position in the mayor's office. B of the increased appropriation, approximately $5,600, is provided solely for one-time supplies and services related to the executive assistant position in the mayor's office. C of the increased appropriation, approximately $23,000, is provided solely for temporary seasonal staffing budget authority. D, the overall increase to the general fund mayor's office appropriation is $43,900. Number four, increase the salary for the director council office position by $15,100. Salary range change from grade 40 to grade 51 of the A07 non-representative pay plan plus associated benefits, approximately $17,750 in total. Number five, increase the salary for the director of communications and community engagement position by $2,300. Salary range change from grade 49 to grade 51 of the A07 non-representative pay plan plus associated benefits, approximately $2,750 in total. Number six, increase the salary for the manager housing and homelessness position by $1,700. Salary range change from grade 39 to grade 42 of the A07 non-represented pay plan plus associated benefits, approximately $2,000 in total. Number seven, increase the salary of the manager equity and inclusion initiatives position by $2,200. Salary range change from grade 39 to grade 42 of the A07 non-represented pay plan plus associated benefits, approximately $2,600 in total. Number eight, decrease the reserve for budget adjustment by $25,100. A, there is no net change to the city council department budget. This action arises from the need for additional staff support in the mayor's office department and process salary range changes in the city council department.
All right, Mr. Collier, we've got you now. Come on up. And please introduce yourself, just so we get your name right. And you have up to three minutes.
Oh, this is the first time. It's scary. All right, I'm Alexander Collier. Yeah, so I'm here in opposition of ordinance 36213, where the, there's funding asked for a second executive director position, as well as increasing the appropriation funds to that executive assistants. Because per staffing, I think there are already too many unfilled positions within the city for there to be a second executive assistant. And filling any of those other positions, I think, would do just as much good for the city as having a second assistant where we already have one. And another large part of this is that Woodward has already pushed to hire some questionable staff in the past. She advocated for four lateral officers that came to Spokane, and one of which was the cause of a half a million dollar lawsuit the Seattle Police Department had to pay. Then there was Johnny Perkins, who had many questionable decisions during his time as a deputy chief operating officer in San Diego, and was hired onto the department after being demoted and given a pay cut by the new mayor there. Somehow, after all that, Woodward thought that those are the type of people our city needs to lead it. Soon after being hired to Spokane, Perkins is investigated for racism. I understand that the investigator found no evidence of racism, and the mayor backed it up by, and I quote, "Racism has no place in their organization, community, or country." But how trusting is this report when there was a disparities report published around the same time of January 11, 2021, claiming that black Spokane residents are five times more likely to be arrested in Spokane police disproportionately stop minorities? Report or not, if an individual who has to be investigated for racism, this says a lot about them. During the last meeting, Councilwoman Wilkerson also stated that Perkins was not including her in city information that was being shared with other council members. Similar practices were what started the pushout for Cupid Alexander. "Mr. Perkins, the CC tab is not that difficult to find on an email list, and those names are not that complicated to spell." There was no excuses here. Mayor Woodward herself seems to be making more contentious choices as well, starting with increasing the city's spending budget by eight and a half percent in October of 2021, while people's paychecks were the lowest and the city's revenue was dropping. More recently, there are closed-door meetings. Even as Cupid Alexander left, he claimed the mayor was withholding information from the city on the homelessness statistics. More recently, she's signed a contract with the House of Charity without the council and turning the East Central Library into a new police station without the knowledge of that community or those council members who represent that community. In conclusion, I urge you council members to ask some serious questions about the necessity for this new position the mayor wishes to add and how trustworthy this choice of her can possibly be when the more recent ones have been so questionable. So I just wanted to let people know the city is noticing, and we do care, and we want to raise the bar.
Thanks for your testimony tonight. That's the only public testimony on this ordinance. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
I want to say one of the, one of the most dedicated, hardworking, intelligent people working at this city is city administrator Johnny Perkins. I really appreciate all the work that he does for the city. We are lucky to have him, and without Johnny, a lot of things in this city would suffer. And so, thank you, Johnny Perkins.
Any other council commentary on this ordinance? All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes five to two. All right, that brings us to resolutions and final reading of ordinances.
Resolution 2022-48, amending resolution 2022-7, which appointed city council members to boards, committees, and commissions for 2022. This updates the attachment to resolution 2022-7, adding councilmember Oppone to the Association of Washington Cities Board and replacing councilmember Stratton with council president Beggs as a liaison member of the downtown Spokane Bid Board.
All right, we don't have any community comment. Any council comment? No one arm wrestled Zach for the AWC position?
I'd lose.
All right, please prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. And now the reason most of you are here. Go ahead, Ms. Pfister.
Did you want to do the first reading?
Oh, sorry. Thank you for reminding me. I wanted to go out of order slightly and do the first reading ordinances. I don't think we have any community testimony on that, so go ahead and do the first reading ordinance.
Ordinance C 36214, amending ordinance C 26266 that vacated Gardner Avenue from the extended west line of Lot 47, Block 2 of Keystone Addition, to the extended east line of Lot 63, Block 2 of Keystone Addition to the same being located between Howard and Washington Streets in the city and county of Spokane, and providing for an effective date, this releases an easement. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
All right, so we'll hear that in a couple weeks. And actually, on the same theme of doing things where people aren't testifying, why don't you read ordinance C 36210?
Sorry, council president, real quick, we have some in the audience who are having trouble hearing. Is there a way we can turn up the volume at all?
Well, okay, we'll just, we'll... You can't hear back there? Can you come up closer? Now it won't help? Well, other people can, but I will do my best to speak up.
There they go.
Can you hear? Okay, they've adjusted it up there. All right. Thanks for the feedback. Thank you, Councilmember Bingle, for catching that. All right, so that other ordinance.
Ordinance C 36210, relating to commercial vehicles, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 16A, point 44.100.
All right, we don't have any public commentary on this. Is there any council commentary? All right, seeing none, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. And now, 36209.
Ordinance C 36209, establishing water conservation and drought response measures, enacting a new section 13.04.1925, and amending section 13.04.300 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
All right, we have quite a few people signed up for this. I'm going to read three names at a time, and the first three names are going to be Jerry White, Larry Andrews, and Kevin Coons. And I'm just going to remind people that you do have up to three minutes to speak. I'll start. We'll have the timer. When the timer goes to yellow, there's one minute left. When it goes to red, your time's up, and I'll ask you to finish. And again, ask you to address your comments to me, the chair of the meeting. And we don't do applause or boos. We just want to create kind of a safe space for people to express their opinions in front of people. So I think that, and if there's some other rule that you trip up against, I'll remind you about it. But anyway, Jerry, come on down. Oh, sorry, before. Sorry, Jerry. I forgot. We have Cara Odegaard, who's actually going to give us a presentation on this to warm things up, so. Thought, yeah, no. Thanks, Cara.
You just need to minimize that little box that popped up there. Either one. Thank you, council. I'm here today, I was asked to give some background information on this ordinance. We use a lot of water in Spokane. This chart here is showing us data from across the country that's compiled by the U.S. Geological Survey. It's a county by county assessment of how much water each county across the country uses. That orange line represents the Spokane County, but the purple dotted line represents the city of Spokane, and that data about the city of Spokane comes from our own water department. We use 202 gallons per person per day, which is in the 97th percentile, meaning 97% of the rest of the country uses less water than we do. The average is 79 gallons per day, per person. This chart here and this data comes from our own water department as well. It's from our 2020 Water Conservation Master Plan, and it shows you the average pumping for the city of Spokane across the 12 months of the year. And as you can see, we're pumping four to six times more water during the summer months. And if we were to just look at residential pumping, residential water use goes up 10 times more than the average baseline from the winter in the summer. This Water Conservation and Drought Response Ordinance is looking to do two primary things. Why, it's answering the reason, or the question, why we conserve water. And first, I wanted to point out that our infrastructure that we building, so the pipes, the pump station, our water storage, all of our infrastructure is supporting, we build it for these three peak months out of the summer, and we can avoid costly infrastructure projects in the future if we are using less water in the summer. We also have to consider that we have fire mitigation standards with our infrastructure costs, so those need to be considered when we're making choices in the summer. This ordinance also aims to protect recreation and a healthy river ecosystem. And last, but not least, sensible water conservation preserves the aesthetics of our river, which is an economic driver for Spokane. This data and this chart came from the Washington Department of Ecology/Hydrologist John Covert, and it was presented at the Spokane River Forum in 2018. Mr. Covert determined that regional pumping removes between 120 and 270 cubic feet of water per second from the middle Spokane River, with the largest impact occurring during summer months. Spokane residents and businesses represent the largest single consumer by population region-wide. The water conservation strategies outlined in this ordinance will help us achieve a goal of 25% overall decrease in pumping, if done along with the conservation efforts the city is already doing. That is our Waterwise Spokane program and the Spokanescape programs that have been very popular. This equates to real measurable amounts of water remaining in the river and a positive impact to ecological health, especially during the low-flow seasons of the summer. This slide identifies what is already happening with other jurisdictions across our watershed or within the Spokane Valley Rathron Prairie aquifer. We've had a lot of questions about, well, if Spokane conserves, there's still a lot of other users of the aquifer. Yes, that's true, but we are not the first to consider water restrictions during the summer, and I just wanted to point that out. And then, the other question we've received a lot about from the public and from council members alike is how much education and outreach have we done over the last couple years? This work really started in earnest in 2020 with the Water Resource Collaboration Group, which city council created. They're a technical advisory group consisting of volunteer community members with backgrounds in water resource management, hydrology, and ecology. They came together specifically, asked by council to form recommendations for water conservations and drought response measures. The idea here was to build off of the city's 2020 Water Conservation Master Plan and to quantify our water use and conservation to include drought. The very nature of this group was the beginning of a coordinated outreach and education process that continued when we conducted three workshops in 2021, one in each of the city council district, where we discussed the aquifer river connections and trends around water use, including population growth and climate change, as well as research on what other cities and communities were doing to conserve water. We also conducted a survey where we asked people to, about their water use and what they would be willing to do to conserve. That survey received 530 responses. We presented this feedback that we had received during the workshops and the surveys to the park board, the community assembly, and various neighborhood council meetings throughout that last half of last year. And in addition to this, the Sustainability Action Subcommittee also conducted multiple surveys and outreach events, as you can see up here, between 2020 and 21. Those surveys and workshops were much broader in topic. They covered additional sustainability-related topics, but without fail, every time we conducted an event or a survey, there was a very clear message from our residents that water conservation and river protection were at the top of their list for what they expected the city to do in terms of environmental concerns. And even Spokane residents who are not concerned with other issues, for example, climate change, still expected the city to protect the river and the health of the river. Thanks, Mark. So these are, just in summary, some key items they wanted to bring to your attention when considering this ordinance. It's a combination of water conservation and drought. The idea is if we practice these conservation measures that are very simple and common sense that are being done across the rest of the aquifer, then we are less, hopefully, will have less drought response needed. The city is required, per this ordinance, to do robust education, including the benefits to ratepayers and to the community. There is a two-year delay, which will help allow for us to continue our outreach and education. That delay of any enforcement and enforcement will only take place if and after the city makes an additional individualized education touch or outreach with that water user. Water conservation strategies, as I said, are designed to help lessen the impact of drought, and as council will look over the next two seasons of information and how we are doing, then they will have the ability to make decisions around the most effective way to reach our, reach our standards. And that includes incentives, rate changes, and/or penalties, as outlined in the ordinance. This helps impact, reduce the impact to our river, and it also helps reduce costs over time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Cara. All right, now Jerry White, if you could come up, and Larry Andrews, you're on deck, and then Kevin Coons. Welcome to City Council.
Thank you very much, Council President Beggs, and good to see all of you here at the city council this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come down and speak. My name is Jerry White Jr. I'm your Spokane River Keeper, and as such, I have the privilege of actually speaking for the river itself, to the extent possible, for the supporters of our work and those who value the river and the ecological integrity, its beauty, and its economic ecosystem services, as well as the quality of life that it brings here to us in Spokane. So there's a couple of things I'd like you to understand, and one of those is this conversation is, in this ordinance, is really about river protection, not necessarily about aquifer protection. The Spokane River has two sources, the surface water in Coeur d'Alene Lake, but also the Spokane Valley Rathron Prairie aquifer. The Spokane River depends on the flow of the cold, clean water from the aquifer in those long, hot summer months, and specifically at times of drought. It's very, very critical. And as a, you know, kind of a keystone of how important this is, in the upper Spokane River, where we have almost exclusively Coeur d'Alene Lake water, we have very few native red-banded trout left. They've suffered from droughts in the past, where we have in the lower river or the middle river down here near downtown, many red-banded trout are still thriving, and that's because we have that input of cold, clean aquifer water. So pumping on the aquifer has a demonstrable impact on the Spokane River, as Cara Odegaard pointed out. And the following ordinance asks each of us to simply be prudent, to simply be wise, and not to waste water. Pumping and consumptive use is extreme in our region, again mentioned by the prior speaker, and much of this unfortunately is water waste. We're in the 97th percentile of the national average, and normal use is considered well, well below 150 gallons a day, even below 100. So you've heard that we've used 202 gallons per day, per person. I was on recently EWU's Community Indicators website, where EWU pointed out that in 2020, actually, each resident in the region, not necessarily in city limits, but in the region, consumed almost 280 gallons per person, per day. consumed almost 280 gallons per person per day. So Spokane needs to reduce our inefficient waste to protect our river. The problem is not indoor use, that first 150 gallons of water per day.
Jerry, your time is up.
Oh, that's it. All right. I urge you to pass this ordinance and think of the future generations who appreciate our river. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Andrews, come on up, and then Kevin Coons, and then Nagmana Shirazi. Welcome to City Council.
Yeah, my name's Larry Andrews. I own Andrews Mechanical. Been a resident in this city since 1958. My family's lived here all our life. We live in Spokane because of the water, okay? That's why a lot of us come here, is because of the water, okay? And I urge you not to approve this by any stretch of the imagination. And I want you to know what I just read in your ordinance. I read what you said about knowing what happens with our water, and you don't know what happens, and you need to go through a study. Well, I've been involved with the Modern Water District for many years, and I made a call to them this morning to see how our aquifer has been performing since they've been recording the levels. And they told me this morning, there is no significant change in the aquifer since they've been recording this time, okay? And you can look out there at the Spokane premix plant, and you can see the water out there. Even last year, when it was 112, the water level didn't change, and that's what the Modern Water District told me. So, yes, we shouldn't be pumping out of the river, we're pumping out of the aquifer. You've got to remember, all the water from the aquifer is coming from the Ponderay River area. And the immense amount of snow that comes into the Ponderay Lake drifts into here, and it all ends up out in the ocean anyway, okay? We're just taking not even a drip out of the bucket, okay? This brings us to the coldest spring we've had on record. It still isn't 70, and our snowfalls are at 130%. And I wrote an article this last fall about how we wanted to get rid of all our water and shut it down like this. And sure enough, it came true. The article came true. You know, we've got a CO2 problem in this city that's a lot, and the only way we're going to get rid of the CO2 problem is to have trees. We need to be planting trees, and we need to be irrigating the trees to get rid of the CO2 levels, to bring them down where they need to be. Otherwise, we're going to have serious problems here. We just put in all these coliseums where we're jamming thousands of people down here, and our CO2 levels, I've measured them downtown in the corridor, up to 130 ppm, okay? That's a lot. And so the only way we're going to bring that down is to use our green, water our plants, get the grass growing green. It reduces the heat, filters the water, filters the lawn, controls soil erosion, and it sequesters the carbon natural gas.
Larry, we come to the end of your time tonight.
Okay. Many people don't have sprinkler systems either in this city. And so they sprinkler when they can, and you're going to charge them for doing that.
Thank you. Come back and see us again. Kevin Coons and Nagmana Shirazi, and then I believe it's Elise Hochstat, but I might have the first name wrong on that.
Thank you, City Council, and to our region's many water advocates for your efforts in assisting our city with regards to this precious resource. As we all know, our region's water provides direct life to our city through drinking water, nourishment to our native surroundings, recreational activities, and much more. But our region's water story goes much deeper. Envisioning Spokane's landscape, both above and below ground, being carved out by water roughly 12,000 years ago is a testament to the strength and interconnectivity to the land in which we live and thrive. I've had the honor of working within the water sector for most of my young career and have been deeply moved by how much water impacts our daily lives. I am truly grateful to be in a town that I was born and raised in and that is graced with a sole-source aquifer, something understood long before my time. In fact, a 1909 spokesman article quoted the city bacteriologist at the time, Dr. Frank Rose, as he summed up our water supply by stating, "It can be said that there is no city in the world with a better water supply than Spokane." The abundance of our region's fresh water is a large part of what makes this place so special, but it is also why it deserves our assistance in time of need. Like most resources, fresh water is not infinite. 2.5% of our planet's water is fresh water, but only 1.25% of our Earth's fresh water is accessible via surface water. As our city continues to grow, the time is now to ensure protection of this limited resource. I am here today to encourage all of us to view Ordinance C36219 as less of a restriction and more of an opportunity, an opportunity to become water-conscious as we begin to understand how simple changes in our lifestyles at a household level can have tremendous impact on assisting our aquifer, the river, and the community at large. To summarize, a recent survey of Spokane residents indicated that roughly 89% of participants strongly care about the river, and I'm grateful that we feel so strongly about water. This ordinance presents the opportunity for citizens of Spokane to put this care into action. In the end, water, water is worth it. Thank you all for your service and your time.
Thank you, Kevin. All right. Nagmana, and then I believe Elise Hochstat, and then David Goldblum.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nagmana Shirazi, and I'm a resident of Spokane City. The Spokane River is what gives Spokane life. This whole area is made habitable because of the river. We depend on it for sustenance, recreation, livelihood, and to power our daily lives. Ordinance C36209 is more than just a measure to regulate water usage during the summer months. It is a common sense ask that teaches us water usage during the summer months. Good stewardship, making good conservation practices a habit, and reminds us that we need to share. Even though it seems that way, unfortunately, water is not an unlimited resource. We are dependent on the winter snow melt to refill our sole-source aquifer, and in turn for it to empty its cold water in the river during the critical summer low-flow period so salmon and other species can survive. After almost 100 years, we are seeing the introduction of species of salmon in our area waters. The cool temperature of the water is critical to their survival. We use the river for recreation. It is free and available to everyone. We can't say that about many other things, so it is important for our entire community to be able to access it for use. We already know we use over 200 gallons of water per person per day in Spokane City and over 300 gallons per person per day in the valley during the summer months. That is almost five times more than what people in the rest of the nation use. A lot of water is directed to irrigating our lawns over the summer months. Watering two or three times during the week before 9:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m., for instance, makes the grassroots grow deeper and trains them to be ready and resilient for the hot summer months. If we start now, we can maintain our green lawns without the danger of root damage in the higher summer days. On the flip side, when we use less water as irrigation during the day, also causes water loss due to more evaporation. As the Climate Justice Program Director for the Lands Council, I urge the City Council to adopt Ordinance C36209 so we can continue to grow responsibly as a city. As one of my colleagues at TLC says, the Lands Council says, "How much you get to drink depends on how many straws there are in the soda. There is only one aquifer." We need to learn to conserve and use this resource responsibly by sharing, and for the City Council to ensure the city planners look at these aspects as we continue to grow so we don't have to keep going back to the drawing board every few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm not sure if I'm getting the first name, but okay, great. Come on in, Elise. After Elise is David Goldblum, and then Michael Maguire.
I was going to say thank you for getting my name right. That's a rarity.
Okay.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for having me. I want to say I support this ordinance, and in fact, I'd support a stronger one. We must all come to the realization that having a green lawn all summer long in an arid climate is no longer a practical or feasible idea, and is certainly no longer a sign of good housekeeping. Good housekeeping today means being good stewards of our resources, the resources that we depend on, and recognizing that we are part of a much larger ecosystem already stressed out and out of balance, as can be seen by our newly adopted wildfire season. Limiting our water usage and falling in line with the national average is the least we can do to ensure the aquifer is plentiful now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. David Goldblum, then Michael Maguire, and then Kelly Tansey.
Thank you, Council President. My name is David Goldblum, and I'm a high school student here in Spokane and a resident of District 2. I go to the community school. I am personally speaking in support of the proposed city ordinance to conserve water and prevent excessive pumping from our aquifer. A U.S. Geological Survey found that Spokane residents use 202 gallons of water per person per day, which is more than 97% of the rest of the country nationally. In addition, Spokane uses six times more water in the summer months when the river is at its lowest point. The river and aquifer are hydrologically connected, so when people pump too much water, they rob the river of precious aquifer water needed for temperature control. This is simply not sustainable in the long run. According to the Spokane River Keeper, increased temperatures in the river have reduced the red-banded trout population severely. These trout depend on cool aquifer water in the summer to survive. So when people waste water watering their lawns excessively, they are endangering Spokane's signature fish. When I am taking the bus to school in the morning, it is infuriating to see sprinklers running when it is raining outside when it should be water that we should be conserving. Our precious water source is being misused and made useless by people trying to make their lawns look perfect. Although I have some questions about how the city plans to enforce it, I would like to call upon the council to pass this ordinance to preserve our water supply and protect it. I am aware that there are people not happy with this legislation, but they fail to see the importance. The ordinance not prevent you from watering your lawn, taking long showers, or even drinking water. All it would do is prevent water from being wasted by the general public and penalize those who misuse it. Please, for the sake of my generation and those who come after us, pass this ordinance to ensure we have a future in the city of Spokane. With no river or aquifer, there is no water here. With no water, we have no path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Michael Maguire, and then Kelly Tansey, and then Christopher Savage.
Thank you, Council President Beggs, member of the Spokane City Council, Michael Maguire. Today in Spokane, water rationing is already here. As you know, the price of gas is nearly $5 a gallon. Food has gone up dramatically. People, the poor, are going to buy gas rather than try watering their lawn. The city needs to help people, the poor, with their watering bills. Fewer people watering means less income for the city. More public discussion is needed on this lawn watering resolution. More facts are needed about long-watering rationing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire. Kelly Tansey, then Christopher Savage, then Mike Peterson.
Hello. My name is Kelly Tansey, Spokane resident for more than 30 years. I'm asking that you guys also, also asking that you support this ordinance, did I get it right, about the water conservation issue? And I wanted to bring up an issue related to water usage and a way that we can all protect it, and that is through, well, first of all, animal agriculture uses an absolutely enormous amount of water. And so I think for the immediate future and for the long-term situation, we should try to go as close to a vegan diet as possible. I brought some information to anybody here that's interested in learning more about it. It's a major threat to ecosystems, and basically, I hope that you will read the information I've sent you about water usage from truthordoubt.com. Anybody interested here that wants to read about it, please go to that site. And again, just please pass this resolution immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Christopher Savage, then Mike Peterson, then Steve Corcoran.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Savage, and I live in Spokane District 3. Tonight I come to you before you as a Spokane County Water Conservancy Commissioner. I agree that we need to conserve our finite supply of water that is in the Spokane Valley Rathrum Aquifer, but I disagree that we are in an emergency that requires emergency protocols to address this concern. I would request that the council use the carrot before the stick, meaning educating the public through public service announcements or providing incentives to conserve water in a healthier fashion, rather than using a stick with penalties that bring the hammer down on our friends, family, and neighbors. If you're using a physical indicator of the Spokane River water levels during the summer months, that is only one of several factors that go into analyzing how much water is in our aquifer and is a poor measure of our current water supply. Wrapping up, I would like to request the council vote no on this ordinance or vote to defer to a later date so more water data and public commentary can be collected and analyzed. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you, Christopher. Mike Peterson, then Steve Corcoran, and then Alexis Teneska.
Hi, City Council. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm Mike Peterson. And just a few thoughts. I was looking at all the charts, and our aquifer goes down through the summer, and it's very clearly related to the pumping that's going on the river. There's no denying, you can see the charts. So as we have less water coming in from the Ponderay, also from the Coeur d'Alene, over the years, like we did last year, we can expect to see even more problems with our aquifer recharging all the way. So what's a simple solution? Well, something, I grew up in Denver about, well, way too long ago, 60 years ago, and Denver's had restrictions and telling people not to water during the day for decades. And right now, it says 10 to 6, no watering in Denver. So many other cities around the country have done this because they do see droughts happening more and more, changes happening, and we have a chance to get on top of this. It's not too tough to water outside of the hours of 10 to 6. It's not, most lawns, unless it's a brand-new lawn, only needs to be watered once or twice a week anyway. We're overwatering lawns. If we would just plant our native tree, I'd love to do that. I planted 10,000 this year, the ponderosa pine. You only water them a little bit the first year, and then they're going to be fine. So we could do this together, folks. It's a couple of years before the enforcement starts. That gives us a lot of time to educate, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mike. Steve Corcoran, Alexis Teneska, and then Greg Bogart.
Welcome back, Council President.
Thank you.
You know, when you pass this resolution or this ordinance, your work has just begun. I share with you a story. During the Second World War, my grandmother came to visit us, and she pulled out two rolls of vegetables to plant flowers, and my brothers went through the roof. We need the food. And what my grandmother would do would put flowers on the table every morning, and she said, you know, you have to feed the body and the soul, especially in hard times. Well, this is not World War II, but we have a war on poverty. We've come out of a housing crisis. And right now, what we need, we need to raise the spirits of this people. And when this ordinance passes, one of the things we cannot have happen is to have people let their yards go to waste. I've had people tell me, well, I won't water the lawns at summer. And right now, we've got about 80% of the people living in this city struggling, and I want them to keep up the yards. I want, I'm driving down streets and seeing the majority of yards that aren't being mowed, aren't being cared for. And what this city needs right now is raising their spirits. We've got to get back on our economic feet. And so a part of this passage is not to have You told me you're going to keep the water running because you want to raise the environment downtown. You want to keep the parks watered so the place have a green place to go. Well, our neighborhoods need to grow and thrive, and it's education, and we're doing a damn poor job of it. If those figures you represent about the waste issues going on. So when you pass this ordinance, I hope there isn't a knee-jerk reaction where people sit there and say, okay, fine, we won't do it. Because when yards aren't kept up, and I'm in the rental business, the property management, when yards kept up, trash comes in, and attitudes go down. And right now, what the city needs the most is raising its spirits and getting back on our economic feet. We have a war against poverty. So let's do our water conservation, let's do all the things that are happening, but just don't have a knee-jerk reaction that where people finally say, okay, fine, we won't water, let the yards go to hell. And, and they're even paying people to take grass out. And, and again, the spirit of this community, the most important thing right now is getting this community back on its economic feet. We have a war of poverty, and if we don't feed the soul, as well as the body, we're not going to come out of it in the way I think we should. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Alexis Tenasket, then Greg Bogart, and then Russell Neff.
Hello. I'm Alexis Tenasket. I'm a descendant of Chief Joseph Tenasket, and my people have been living here since time immemorial. I'm an Okanagan descendant, but we've been coming here and visiting the Spokane area and gathering plant foods and all kinds of things here, so. I just want to remind everyone, we're not only part of an economic system, we're part of a living ecological system. We cannot eat lawn grass, and the economy won't provide liquid life. We can't pay the clouds to rain and make snow. Our decisions here today affect all the plants and creatures which rely on the same water to live. We rely on a habitable, living environment for our sustainability as well. This is a matter of survival. And I want to address some fears. Reducing non-native grass lawns doesn't take away from our experience of the beauty and sustenance of nature here, it adds to it. Native plants have deeper roots which bring water up to the surface level, which we need. If we're looking for more water, there's one way. And with that, I would like to share a poem that came to me when I visited Standing Rock in 2016, and I've never written this down, it's just imprinted. Poverty, violence, starvation, sex trafficking, these problems just keep happening and happening, going around and around in the same old cycle. Crying in silence, our power is stifled. Depression, anxiety, suicide, addiction, looking down on the victim like they're telling tales of fiction. It's up to us to transform the suffering, to empathize with each other in love like we're mothering. We are not fighting you, we are fighting for you. You need water too, so we share this issue. Break down walls, let nature live, take notes from Mother Nature and remember how to give. Break down walls, build bridges, tables, and share. If you were the one in need, you would want them to care. From the womb to the tomb, from the in to the out, mini wachoni, water is life. From the east to the west, from the north to the south, mini wachoni, water is life. From species to species, from the bottom to the top, mini wachoni, water is life. From culture to culture, even from cop to cop, mini wachoni, water is life. Then that.
Thank you, Alexis. All right, next is Greg Bogart, then Russell Neff, and then Mark Gauthier. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council members, and President Beggs, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here as a citizen to express my views. I just want to say, I oppose the proposed water ordinance, and the reason being is, we don't need more bureaucracy to enforce water laws. We don't need more layers of enforcement. We don't need to create an environment of Narcon your neighbor like the current sitting governor created during the, during the COVID situation. We don't need double standards or exemptions. So if the park can water and we can't, that's a double standard. Why? It's still conservation, it's still, right? So if the citizens have to endure a pain point, I would think the city would too. But, and furthermore, we don't need a heavy-handed approach, especially just coming out of COVID. I think as Mr. Corker stated, you know, we need to see something positive out there in this environment, in this city, and at this time. And more, more enforcement is not it. However, what I do agree with, I do agree with the approach to incentivize. There's, you, you can lead people much further, much faster by incentivizing them. We don't need more laws, we don't need more regulations, we don't need more ordinances, we don't need more mandates. We're tired, we're tired of that. But do we need to be good stewards? Absolutely. I don't agree with the fact that, you know, if we're wasting things, we need to be, we learn, we need to learn how to be better stewards of what we do every day. And, you know, you guys have a great website, the 3-1-1. You know, I go on there, I look for incentives, you know, it's like, hey, you know, they got the sprinkler systems, they got low-flow water toilets, they got these situations in there that you can apply for to, to reduce it. You know, money, money talks, and it gets my attention, and it gets my attention if my rates are going to go up because you guys are going to do this too. So what I'm asking for at this time, I'm asking you to reconsider your approach. I think you're using a very heavy-handed approach, I think you need to reconsider. Conservation is important, but so is creating a good spirit and environment in Spokane. Hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Next, Russell Neff and Mark Gauthier, and then we're going to have four people on the phone, Dave, Cheryl, Natalie, and Carol, so get ready on the phone. And if you're on the phone, remember, you need to be on the phone listening because there's about a 20 or 30-second delay if you're watching it on TV. All right, Russell.
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Russell Neff, resident of Spokane. Yeah, I oppose this. I like what the previous gentleman stated about not having a heavy hand in this. Some of the things I've heard since I've, I've been listening, they all have valid points, but it confuses what I came down here for, which I thought was consumption. I've heard fish, aquifers, cool water, consumption, quality, abundance. I don't know which, I thought we were talking about consumption or saving water, not, I mean, I'm not saying these letters aren't important, but it seems like we're talking about more than just water consumption here. If water is so important, then why are we going to pump fluoride into it? We have PFAS in our water, do we know that? It comes out of Spokane Review Plant Out in the Water, out in the valley. We don't check for that, though, I don't believe. So water quality versus water abundance is an issue as well. So if we care about the water like some of these folks say, then it should be all, not just one. We apparently have 10 trillion gallons in the aquifer. There's 178 million gallons per day used from personal consumption, agriculture, and business, 540 million gallons runs through the river every day. Not, and I read the, or I heard the numbers that we are 97% more than a nation. I'm an engineer. If it was me, I'd be figuring out why we're using that much money. It seems crazy to me. I don't use, in my household, we don't use anywhere near that 202. Do I have leak, do we have leaks in our lines? I don't know. But I would be finding out, that number seems so grossly overstated that there must be a problem that we're not aware of, possibly, right? Again, an engineer, I don't make assumptions, I get data, and then I act. And I'd like to see us just making awareness rather than fining people. It seems like the West Coast has just become a whole fine and penalized citizens, and I would like to see billboards and so forth. I don't agree, or I don't disagree with not watering during the day. I don't do it because it just evaporates, right? Makes sense, but I don't, I think people should be fined for it. That's it. Thanks for your time, and I would like to see a, what would the gentleman call it? Not a decision night, but a continuing conversation? Because I think the big one to me is 202 gallons average. I should look at my bill, but I don't know how it could be that far without something else going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Russell. Mark Gauthier.
Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I'm Mark Gauthier. I work just a few blocks away from here, and my family lives within a stone's throw of the river. I've got three kids who loved a boat, loved to swim, loved to fish and eat the fish, and we treasure our river, that's why we live here. From my perspective, this is an education and conservation ordinance. It's not about the enforcement piece that never, you know, it's always been the goal to educate folks, and the only people that are going to be enforced upon are the most egregious violators, basically. Basically, the people that you get pulled over by the officer and he gives you a friendly, you were speeding, but I'm going to let you go, and then you speed away from the officer, those are the people that have the potential to get enforced upon in the future. When people understand that they're in the 97th percentile of the national average with their consumption, they become empowered to make informed decisions on their consumption. They can then cut back and realize their lawns will be just fine if they just water them a few times a week. They can also be enticed to look at Spokanescape as an alternative to the traditional lawn. So this is, this is about education. And by triggering the drought response at 1,000 CFS, our community can band together and share the responsibility to hopefully avoid dropping below the 850 CFS, which is very detrimental to both the life in the river and to recreation on our river. And if, and if at least we can't prevent going below 850, which has happened multiple times over the last several years, we can substantially reduce how far below 850 we'll end up dropping. And when this was evaluated, there was an assessment that looked at nationwide at drought response measures that were both mandatory and that were voluntary, and it was only the ones that were mandatory that had statistically significant increase or decreases in the consumption of that community. Unfortunately, even though we wish we could just do voluntary, it has proven across the country that voluntary did not work. So that's why we, we really need to take this step. And then I really want to remind us that we can't forget the life that's in the river. From the macroinvertebrates, all the way up the food web, and to those red-banded trout, they all depend on clean water, and they, they deserve it. And they don't deserve water that's so slow and stagnant that is full of toxic algae or toxins. We have water quality standards we are required to meet, and the less water we have in the river, the less we dilute the contaminants coming out of our water treatment facilities. And we must also consider our downstream neighbors, the Spokane Tribe, who depend on the river and the fish within it. They have water quality standards that must be met. So I implore you, the council, to please approve this ordinance for my family and for the future generations and for our downstream neighbors, the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And now, as I said, we're going to switch to the phone, so we have Dave M., Cheryl McGrath, Natalie Poulsen, and Carol Taylor. And Dave, if you're there, if you can hit star 3. So welcome, Dave. If you could give us your full name and what city you live in, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, council members. I'm all for conservation, but not condemnation. The city has done a subpar job of educating regarding water usage. Now the city is proposing to bring down the hammer in a heavy-handed approach with fines, criminal misdemeanors, and promoting neighbor against neighbor. This is not the way to combat the city's failure to educate or motivate. This is unacceptable. The figures used in this proposal are from 2015 and do not represent current usage. Also, it's important to note that the average per-person water usage, 150 to 200 gallons in Idaho and Utah per the EPA, do not include any outdoor water usage. Therefore, this proposal is not accurate. I could not find one per person outdoor watering measurement that included the outdoor water. The park boards report reads more like a, nothing to see here, folks, move along. Should the council vote to move forward with this proposal, it must include all city facilities, including parks, pools, golf courses, water fountains, and so on. The city cannot lead from behind. The city must be the example. The only essential exceptions should be the fire department and medical facilities. I don't see an upside to this proposal in its current form. The city can do better. I believe it would be better to incentivize rather than criminalize. I respectfully encourage all of you to vote no on this flawed proposal. I spoke with Flagstaff, Arizona Water Department today. That is what this proposal most resembles. They told me the majority of homes do not have any water. I've been to Flagstaff, and it is a mountain community with mostly native pine trees that do not require summer watering. So we're comparing apples to oranges. Again, respectfully, I encourage all of you to vote no and take a look at this in a different fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, Cheryl McGrath, and if, once you finish on the phone, if you could hit star 3, that lowers your hand. But Cheryl McGrath, if you could hit star 3 to raise your hand. Welcome, Cheryl. If you could tell us what city you live in, you have up to three minutes.
Oh, good evening, Council President and Council members. This is Cheryl McGrath, 1624 East 37th. First of all, I want to say thank you so much for your very thoughtful, meaningful salutation from my dad last week. It was really, really special. And how apropos that tonight there is a council ordinance being considered, when my dad was interned at the Veterans Memorial Cemetery this morning, and I felt compelled to call in. I have very much enjoyed the dialogue, the presentations about this water ordinance. I find it really interesting that national averages were presented, that were 97% higher than national averages for percentages. I wonder why are we not using comparable regional medians for water usage? Not averages, but regional medians, comparable regional medians. I'm absolutely about conservation, I'm absolutely about not wasting water. I live in a little house on the South Hill, 15,000 square foot lot, so yes, I have a big yard. I don't have a sprinkler system, but I have 15 stations that I have to water, and I move my sprinklers about. It takes me 15 minutes per station, it takes me eight minutes to move the sprinklers, so it takes me five hours and, five hours and, 5.75 hours to move my sprinklers about, not wasting any water, to not only water my yard appropriately, but also to water my 11 garden beds, my raspberry bushes, my blackberry bushes, my nectarine tree, my peach tree, my pumpkin patch, to what? Feed my neighborhood. I am not a sanctified community garden, but everything I grow is for the seniors and folks that are disabled in my neighborhood. But if we impose, you know, I can't water until 6:00 PM at night, really? You want me to be out there watering until midnight? I don't have a sprinkler system. Let's talk pragmatically. What you're discussing in this proposed regulation is really problematic. I encourage conservation. I encourage recycling. If we all quit watering, what happens then? Fire hazard. You talked about fire mitigation. Come on, people. Let's be honest here. We're talking about human beings and their little houses who try to make a difference in their own communities. What you are proposing is significantly impacting my ability to make a positive difference in my community because of what? Because of national averages? I don't think that's appropriate. I think that, that when you're considering what's going on, you have to consider every person's perspective, every household's perspective.
Cheryl. Cheryl.
Yes.
Thank you so much. You've come to the end of your time, but thanks for sharing.
Thank you so kindly, and God bless you all.
Okay, take care. All right. If you want to hit star 3, Cheryl, to lower your hand, and then Natalie Poulsen, if you'd like to hit star 3 to raise your hand. Welcome, Natalie. If you could tell us what city you live in, you have up to three minutes.
when you're considering what's going on, you have to consider every person's perspective, every household's perspective.
Cheryl, Cheryl, thank you so much. You've come to the end of your time, but thanks for sharing.
Thank you so kindly, and God bless you all.
Okay, take care. All right. If you want to hit star three, Cheryl, to lower your hand. And then Natalie Poulsen, if you'd like to hit star three to raise your hand. Welcome, Natalie. If you could tell us what city you live in, you have up to three minutes.
I live in Creighton 3305, Natalie Poulsen. And thank you, Councilman. I can agree with taking some water conservation efforts, but oppose this policy. More public discussion is needed. Thank you for wanting to protect our river and aquifer, but please educate, do not fine or hurt communities by asking neighbors to turn in neighbors. City properties will have different stipulations than residential. How is that equitable? If we want to turn off sprinklers when it rains, that includes schools and, you know, somebody else was saying golf courses and those kinds of things, then that would be more equitable. Maybe they need to water every other day or every three days. But the city should be the lead in this conservation effort. I do have a question. Why would we, as Spokane City, define a drought more drastically than the Department of Ecology? Again, more discussion is needed. There are reasons to use water to clean outside surfaces, and no one should be prohibited to do so, including what Cheryl was just talking about, watering gardens. In addition, having neighbors turn in neighbors does hurt our community, not help it. I think education around strategies to conserve should be the priority, not enforcement by fines. Water is life, and many have those gardens that they need to water. It's not just about grass. I think we should offer incentives to residents that use less water, incentivize and not criminalize, like the gentleman said earlier. Again, more discussion, I think, is needed. And in cooperation with entities like SNAP, we can find ways to conserve water without penalizing the community of Spokane. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Natalie. If you could hit star three to lower your hand. And then Carol Taylor, if you could hit star three to raise your hand. All right. Welcome to City Council, Carol. You have up to three minutes. But tell us what city you're from.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Carol Taylor. I live on the South Hill in Spokane. I guess I have the advantage to be laughed. I agree with what a lot of people have said, and I am against the ordinance. We shouldn't be penalizing people, criminalizing. It just feels like the wrong approach. And I do agree on more discussion. If you could possibly not vote tonight, that probably would be best. Because as you can see from all the attention, this got a lot of people's attention, and then there were lots of people who probably couldn't come that would like to speak. I'm like the other lady that spoke. I have a huge garden. And if you remember, last summer, it was 100 degrees plus. What I had to do to keep my plants alive was water twice a day. And so that's, you know, zucchini and squash and beautiful tomatoes and all that. They would have all died if I would have to water like at 6:00 at night or could water every other day. So it's not just lawns that, you know, need water. And the other thing I wanted to question is, same thing with the amount that you guys are saying, 202 gallons. There is no way I use that much. And most of the people in my house, I can't imagine, even in the summer. I mean, I only water a few times a week anyways for my yard, except for the garden. So anyways, thank you very much. And I do hope you guys will take into account everybody's opinion and make the right decision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carol. That's the end of our phone people. We have several other people in person. So Kathy Dixon, if you'd like to come down. And then after Kathy is Linda Foreman, and then Greg Sweeney.
Hi, Council. Thanks for inviting me. I'm Kathy Dixon. I was raised here, went away, I've come back again. Right now, I'm volunteering for the Sierra Club, but I'd be here regardless. I've noticed some changes in Spokane since I grew up here. For example, there's a lot of wind now. Never used to be wind like this. There is now. And I guess it would almost go without saying that we didn't have fires like we have here now. We've had a cold month. So I imagine there's plenty of people who are saying, "There's no global warming. I'm cold." Yeah, well, that means that things have changed so that we don't have our usual kind of weather. That's what it means. So long ago, my ancestors thought that the Spokane River was infinite, that they could dump anything into it that they wanted to, and it would be just fine. And they did that, and they killed a lot of fish, first with sawdust, and then with raw sewage, which my mother and my aunts and uncles would see every time they went down to the river. Now there are things like PCBs at the bottom of the river that lots of other animals that live there bring up to the surface. So I heard someone say that they were eating fish out of the river, and they really shouldn't do that because it's not safe anymore. The river isn't an infinite resource. We can't do anything that we want with it. And the same thing with our aquifer. We can't do anything that we want with it. We have more and more people here, and climate change is real. This is a semi-arid area. It always has been. If anything, it will become more so, rather than less so. I would like to have the Spokane that I grew up in, but I won't be able to do that. That's for sure. But what we can do is do the kinds of things that my grandmother would have had us do when I was growing up and partly raised by her. And she lived in the west-central neighborhood, which is to conserve. That's what we did naturally. Nobody told us about it. We just did it. And that's what we should do now. It's pretty simple. It's a good citizen thing to do. It's not hard to arrange watering so that your zucchini can live. It's not hard to do that. You just have to be more thoughtful about it and not do it the way that people have been doing it for a while. But you can do it. I'm going to try to do it myself. So I certainly hope that you will pass this ordinance tonight. And if anything, I would agree with other people and say, "Yeah, get the golf courses to do the same, get the parks to do the same."
All right, Kathy, thank you. You passed your time. Thanks for coming down. Linda Foreman, followed by Greg Sweeney, and then Rick Bocuk. Come over this way, towards me. There's the mic right there, and you can bend it down.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I'm Linda Foreman. I'm from Spokane County. And I just wanted to say, over the years, obviously I've been around a while, and we would sometimes hear, you know, "Oh, we have water shortage. We should conserve." And we would try to do that. Our family would always try to do that. And that, I feel, is a better choice. Let us know, for sure, you know. And I would like to think most people are responsible that way. I really feel that way. The other comment was, some of you, so my father was Dr. Foreman, and he researched the fluoride issue. And he thought, "By golly, no more fluoride." He didn't want to give fluoride treatments anymore. He just totally turned against it. It's a waste product from aluminum manufacturing and fertilizer manufacturing. It's a toxin, and it can build up in the water systems. We get many, many products that we consume, and they all can have fluoride.
Linda, so this is about the water conservation ordinance, not fluoride. We will talk about fluoride in a year, year and a half.
So I just wanted to say, I think, personal choice is a better thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Greg Sweeney, and then Rick Bocuk.
Thank you, Council President, Council people, all of you. Appreciate what you're doing here very much. Sitting here, listening to everybody chat, I've been thinking about 20 years ago when the City Council then adopted the Great River Gorge Ordinance, which has turned into, was presented by the Friends of the Falls, and is being carried forth by the Spokane River Forum now, and others, Spokane River Keepers. We clean up the river to the point of tons and tons of trash every year. We don't respect it. We don't honor it. We don't feel it unless we're on it. Those of us that go there, we're all, I think, marginally, to greater or lesser degree, abuse water. We take it for granted. We need to stop that. The ordinance could certainly be improved. You know, that's for you to decide in your deliberations. Incentives are a great idea. I think education is absolutely essential because people are either ignorant or arrogant about current water use. So I remind you of the visions, the Olmsted vision of 1913, carried out in the World's Fair nearly 50 years ago, the world's first environmental fair. It's a legacy in this community. We need to protect it. And in order to do that, we need to protect the fish, the river, and the biota. And in order to do that, we need to ensure in perpetuity that the river flows are adequate to protect the life of the river. That makes sense for industry, for households, for business. We depend on that river. It is our city. It's our heart and soul. We need to pass this ordinance, refine it as you will, but make a step in the direction as soon as you can. The river flows are decreasing yearly. We're now meeting the minimum minstream flows currently in the summer. So I thank you for bringing it forward and endorsing it swiftly.
Thank you, Greg. Next is Rick Bocuk, then Eric Hoagel, then Trenton Miller.
Good evening, Rick Bocuk. You know, I remember 10 years ago, in front of River Park Square, my protest, to let you know how much water was wasted and no accountability for it at all. Every hour, you would wash the sidewalk, all day long, every hour, come out and wash the sidewalk, regardless if we was doing shock art or not. But then again, I always thought you were already regulating water. Because you know when you go outside, and you go to the drinking fountain over here, did you know that it's the only drinking fountain in the downtown area? All the other ones are closed down. So you're already regulating water. The homeless people, they really have a hard time finding water out here anyway. So I'm going to still water my tomato plant, and I'll just do it out of my faucet, you know. I mean, and it gets six feet high and five feet wide, and I'm going to still water it. You guys go ahead and pass your law if you want to, but I think you should remember about some of these business groups downtown, they are not going to care about your ordinance. They're going to still waste the water, and there's not a darn thing you can do about it. Because nothing was done about it back then. It's not going to be done about it this time. So go ahead and do your thing. But like these other people says, make sure it's level. And you don't need to be punishing people. I mean, that's ridiculous. You know the sit-and-lie ordinance punishes the homeless, criminalizes people? So, okay, so pass the ordinance, and then maybe people can understand what it's like to be criminalized, because that's what they do to the homeless people. They criminalize them. So go ahead. Maybe they need that understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And then Eric Hoagel, and Trenton Miller, and Kirsten Angel.
Hi. I'm Eric Hoagel. I've lived in Spokane for four years.
A little louder, they want you to speak up.
Oh, sorry. Get a little closer. I've lived in Spokane for four years. I moved here to start teaching at Gonzaga. You'd think I'd be able to project better. Getting a professor to get in under three minutes is going to be tricky, but I'll do my best. I support this measure, and I'll try not to review a bunch of things that people have already said. But I just want to maybe echo the education points that have been made. There are things in this proposal about education that I like, but I also want to sort of stress that enforcement is a part of that education. I've lived in a lot of different places before moving here, and they all had some kind of rule or another about when it made sense to water. And so if any Council members are thinking about voting against this because they're envisioning some kind of, you know, dystopian nightmare scenario, they were green places with lawns and trees. They just, people were a little bit more aware because they had to think, okay, you know, there's a law about water use. So do I need to be pointing my sprinkler at the sidewalk at noon or whatever else? When I moved here, I noticed a lot more noonday sidewalk watering, and I think it's because that educational component is missing. So I would encourage you to vote for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Trenton Miller, then Kirsten Angel, and then Louise Richardson.
Thank you, City Council, for having me today. Trenton Miller, Spokane resident. I'm here to ask you to support this bill, this ordinance, which I would categorize as extreme common sense. I would also consider it to be some of the lowest of low-hanging fruit that we can do to protect our river. While I think that there is so much more that we can and should do on that front, I'm not opposed to picking the low-hanging fruit and getting it out of the way. When we talk a little bit about education, I think there is some modernization that we could do to our water utility bill, which is currently just a PDF that has numbers on it. I think we could really get a lot better at communicating to people how much water they use and where they sit on that line. So that's worth considering. But just to reiterate, I think a vote against this ordinance is a vote against common sense. It's a vote against our river and the fish and ecosystems that survive on it. And it's a vote against our community and the communities that live downstream from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Trenton. Kirsten Angel, Louise Richardson, and Ryan Loke.
Good evening, and thank you, Kirsten Angel, Spokane resident for almost two decades. I'm here today to ask for your full support for this important water conservation ordinance. Climate trends are clearly predicting that Spokane's temperatures will continue to rise over the summer months, and that we'll be faced with increasing summer drought. Our community uses more than 97% of the rest of the nation. Yes, we're blessed with an abundant aquifer, but it would be foolish to not, at the very least, be putting something in place to protect this river aquifer system during the driest of times. Americans are addicted to our routine comforts. I'm guilty of this myself. We in Spokane haven't had to make some of the changes other communities have already made, like in Arizona and California, because we've developed a culture in Spokane of endless water abundance. That culture needs to change based on scientific data and climate predictions that are undeniable. The people who complain that this is too much, too fast, you're not paying close enough attention. You may also not be considering that Idaho gets to our river before we do. They too are growing in population and consumption rates. We can't do this with infrastructure changes alone. We have to inspire change in the behavior of consumers, change in the culture of endless water abundance. That's just not true anymore, not during the hottest months, when we are experiencing drought. That's the time this ordinance kicks in, to protect our river, which protects us. Everyone loves and benefits from our beautiful river aquifer system, including the species that inhabit the river. This ordinance will begin a shift in the false narrative of endless water abundance that has been the status quo here for way too long. It's not a heavy hand. There are no fines or enforcement at the onset. Warnings will come before anything else. It's a first step at building consumption patterns that better reflect the actual world we're living in now, one that everyone has experienced enough to know that it's not fake news. We are in it. We will continue to need to adapt. This is just the first gentle shift in the way we look and relate to our river and aquifer. I just wanted to respond. I really support the piece on education in this ordinance. It's going to take a really concerted effort to show people how to water their lawns differently, to start earlier in the spring and less frequency and less quantity. We're going to have to teach people how to do this differently. So that will take time, and I'm glad that it's built in. I wanted to respond to a gentleman that he thinks we need to raise the spirits of our people. I totally agree. And I have three teenagers, and they are so depressed right now because they don't see people doing enough to change, to respond to climate change. This will raise the spirits of our next generation. They need to see us acting now for their future. So I support that. And please keep paying people to take grass out. You paid me, and my front yard has no lawn. And I have pollinator plants that are water-wise, that attract pollinators, and my neighbors compliment me all the time. And thank you. I would not have done that without Spokanescape. So please continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kirsten. Louise Richardson, and then after Louise, Ryan Loke, and Michael Fairburn. And then after Louise, Ryan Loak, and Michael Fairburn.
I'm Louise Richardson. I live in West Central. Dear City Council, I came here today to register my opposition to your proposal that homeowners and renters would have to check in with the government to discover which days they are allowed to water their lawns. I'm 100% opposed to this idea. First of all, Spokane does not have a water shortage. But even if it did, the property owners in the city are required by law and their mortgage contracts to maintain their homes and the right-of-ways in front of their homes, which includes keeping the grass and vegetation maintained. In so doing, they also provide a pleasing view from the street for those passing by and walking by. This is the essence of community, especially the typical communities found in the city of Spokane, wherein front-facing yards are a defining characteristic. Owners do not water their lawns and take the trouble to mow exclusively for their own private use and pleasure. We do it because we take pride in our homes and our neighborhood. But instead of being applauded, we are now to be criminalized. I can understand encouraging, but not forcing people to be cognizant of water usage. But a well-crafted, ongoing marketing campaign can be used for this purpose and it would be much more effective than a criminalization campaign. I grew up, I personally grew up in Southern California. I never leave water running and I hate to see it wasted because I've been indoctrinated into that way of thinking by constant messaging, not because I was cited and fined. So I'm not opposed to encouraging people to conserve water. Nor am I opposed to asking that people not water at high noon in the middle of summer. But I have a deep concern and discomfort with this proposed petty government intrusion into the lives of citizens of this city who are responsibly maintaining their properties in accordance with local laws. Lawn maintenance benefits everyone and should be applauded, not criminalized. I currently live in West Central on Maxwell Avenue. And I would guess that one out of two property owners, maybe a few more than that, takes the time to maintain their front yards and sidewalks. Last summer, whenever I walked my dog down the sidewalk of my street, I had to carry pruning shears with me to clear the vegetation away to prevent it from getting hit in the face with branches or scratched up by bushes. And as far as I can tell, there was no enforcement of the ordinance that requires property owners to keep their sidewalks clear. But yet somehow the city is going to find and pay the extra personnel needed and the time and the gas needed to drive around enforcing an ordinance which prohibits some people from watering their lawns on Wednesday instead of Tuesday. I think that's a slap in the face of all of us who do care about the way our properties look as they face the street and the sidewalks, which is pretty much every property in the city. I ask you to vote no on this proposal and go back to the drawing board. Responsible property owners and renters who are making the effort to keep their surroundings maintained should be able to do so without having to consult a schedule devised by local government. This is punishment, not encouragement. I understand the idea of conservation, but why bring out the hammer and the circus hoops right off the bat? Why not start out a little more gently and see how people do? If California can change behavior while in crisis mode, Spokane can do it while still in abundance mode without demoralizing the people who still care. I would ask you to give this a try. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Next is Ryan Loak, and then Michael Fairburn, and then Mark Odegaard.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. It's water day today. Appreciate it. It's an important thing that we're talking about, based off of what everyone's saying. I think a lot of people can agree that water is important. I mean, that's why we're having this discussion. It's a hot topic. I mean, we need water to live. And conservation aspect, I think people, usually they don't want to waste water. It's not really in people's nature to waste. The gray area here is mandating watering during daytime, which kind of does waste water, but I mean, that's the gray area we're talking about. I just wanted to say that, I wanted to remind everyone that this thing that we're talking about, it isn't really about today. It's about 20 to 30 years in the future. We're setting up the scaffolding to prepare our community to be more resilient and to prepare our children to have better lives in the future. And I just want to say, thanks for considering it and thank you for your time. And keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, Michael Fairburn, and Mark Odegaard.
President Beggs.
Welcome.
City Council, thank you. I'm Mike Fairburn. I live on West Bridge. I own Living Water Lawn and Tree Care. And we service 6,000 people in the community with fertilization, both organic and more traditional. I've done about 60,000 treatments and I've been on tens of thousands of properties. And I've been in this industry in one form or another. Before it was the green industry, we called it the green industry for over 40 years. Conservation is a huge thing. But the truth is, is that our aquifer has 10 billion gallons. And at the current use rate in our community, we've got 270 years if it doesn't, if it does not replenish at all, which that would be really catastrophic. But to put 270 years in perspective, Ben Franklin had hair. So it's a long time. But that does not mean that we should waste it. Part of what we do is, I have a newsletter that goes out. And people actually like an old-fashioned newsletter from an old-fashioned guy, right? And we teach people about mow heights. Now, one of the things is about our community is its soil. You can have a hydrologist talk all day, but things grow in soil. Most of North Spokane is a sandbox. So if we don't water in the peak of the year, in the summertime, turf will go ahead and it will begin to die. Turf can go into what we would call a summer drought stress one time. And one of the reasons I'm passionate about turf, well, it's been a good living and I'm not going to lie about that. But turf is such an advantage. When I moved back to Spokane as a young man from Southern California, you know, my great-grandma was born here, my grandma was born here, my kids have been born here. I'm the bay sheep of the family that's born in Olympia. But what I would say is this, it was that average people could have a nice yard. And you know what? That's pretty cool, because that's not the condition everyplace else. So we do have a resource. And while we do have a resource, I loved what one of the previous people shared. Why don't we use the time we have, the resource to educate? You know, for years, I've worked on trying to get people to mow at two inches. And then we get them up to two and a half inches. And now we're beginning to have conversations at three and three and a half inches. And especially in North Spokane, it's so important. If you deep water infrequently in North Spokane, you will lose that turf. I'm not making that up. That's just what's going to happen. And remember, our aquifer is essential. What is the best way to go ahead and clean our groundwater? Well, we found with the, oh, you know, that landscape we did up on Waikie, on country homes. That didn't work very well. And everybody kind of drives by and goes, ooh, right? But when we did water abatement on the North Hill, I looked, I lived right above it at the time. We used turf. Why? Because turf is a great filtering system. So many people think that turf is a bad thing. Well, when human beings change the ecosystem, right? We live in a city. We need to do things to mitigate our impact on the city. Turf's wonderful.
We're done with your time.
We are done. Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, Mike. All right, the next I have a request. Mark Odegaard and Annie Wismiller are going to split their time, apparently. And after them is Morgan Shimabuku, and then Gina McKenzie.
Council members, Council President Beggs, thanks for the opportunity. I live in Spokane, Mark Odegaard. I'm a homeowner. But I'm here as a member of the small business community because I think businesses in Spokane have an important role to play in the environment, as well as supporting the community in general. I run a business with my colleague Annie Wismiller in downtown Spokane. I'm going to let her make the rest of the comments. Thank you.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Annie Wismiller. I'm a homeowner in the Shadle neighborhood. And I have the pleasure of taking the bus along Spokane River to work downtown most days. At Measurement, we are really excited to be working with local businesses on how they can increase their positive social and environmental impacts. And I'll just echo Mark in saying that we believe the business community has a big role to play in shaping a livable future in Spokane. Thank you for your time. That's why we're here in support of this ordinance.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? How big is the lawn downtown that is in front of your office?
We work at the community building and they have a rooftop garden that does not require water. It's all handled by rain, as well as a second-floor patio also that was converted into no grass.
So a water ban would have no impact on the building?
No. No. But businesses in the community have responsibility. And just as a homeowner, I vote in support of the, or would like you to vote in support of the ordinance.
All right. Next, Morgan Shimabuku, if I'm getting that right. And then Gina McKenzie, and then Tom Robinson.
Thank you for taking my comment. So my name is Morgan Shimabuku. And I am a mom, environmental scientist, I'm a boater, and a very proud member of the Spokane community. I stand here today in support of the drought ordinance and I hope that you all will support it as well. As a community member, the first place I come and the first place I bring people who visit me, my family and friends, is the river. The park downtown is a beautiful, beautiful place. And I love, I love bringing everyone I know there. As a boater, I have floated the river many times and have found several times in the summers when I am unable to do that. And while it doesn't impact me financially, those who depend on recreation in the river, it does. As an environmental scientist, I'm trained in geology, geography, hydrology, and a host of other disciplines that support those. And what I am proud of this ordinance is that it is scientifically sound and I have full support of the numbers and information that are in there. I also, this isn't part of what I was planning to say, but I think that what really should be also underscored is the benefit in affordability that will come with more conservation in our city. Water conservation has been shown in city after city across the country to actually bring rates down over the long term due to the avoided costs that you gain from reducing your need for upgrading and maintaining larger amounts of infrastructure, as well as the treatment. And energy costs, I know in Spokane, energy cost to pump water up to the top of all of our hills is extreme cost for our water department. And so the more we can reduce that, the better. And so finally, as a mom, I'm a caretaker of our future and of the future we all share. And so I really highly support this ordinance. Someone was saying, we're doing this now for 20, 30-plus years down the line. And I just encourage you to think about the future when putting this in place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gina McKenzie and Tom Robinson. And then I had a, those are the last two people who signed up. And then I had a request from Councilmember Stratton that Margot Hill came just after we grabbed the sheets. I'm on to testify. If people don't object, I will let her testify as well. Welcome, Gina.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the opportunity to live in America and be able to speak to city councils and share and be a community. And so, thank you. I spoke last night, sorry, I'm older and I get a little tired. Not last night, last week. So I still am firmly in favor of conservation. You remember, if it's brown, flush it down, otherwise you, you know, you wait a while, okay? I also, family background, I had great-grandparents who homesteaded here in Spokane. And my great-grandfather brought the first circus in as a railroad engineer into the Spokane area. I'm just confused a little bit about the ordinance because all I've heard are bits and pieces on the media. So I never, I don't have a copy of the full thing, which is, you know, I really should have. But I think a lot of people don't even know this is going on right now. So, you know, there are penalties in there and evidently you can become a criminal. I don't know. I think the public should have more awareness about this. And, you know, I actually checked my water bill. Came out last week in my mail. And I actually have been using an average of 83 gallons of water per day for the past three months. And I try to conserve water. So, and last week I asked about, you know, there's, I don't believe there is a giant emergency and I believe we have lots of water in the aquifer. And I do believe that climate changes. But I was watching an interesting thing on YouTube the other night. And in the Sahara Desert, they have found what they think may be Atlantis buried under the sands there. And also they found giant whale bones. So evidently, you know, climate does change. It takes quite a few years. I don't know how far back that dates. I think the public needs to know and be educated. And I would ask tonight that you would not hold a vote, that you defer this off, inform the public more so more, you can get more input. Because I don't think there's an emergency. And if there is, I hopefully, hopefully we won't have an emergency because we have such a beautiful aquifer. So please do not vote on this tonight. Please get the public informed and more involved. The numbers I saw about the surveys that were taken were very few people, honestly, with the, in relation to the number of people we have in our population now. And our population is growing. So, anyway, thank you and I hope you make great decisions for our city.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, next we have Tom Robinson. And there were two people that were sandwiched in that I didn't mention. So after Tom is going to be Michael Townsend, and then Joanna Gilchrist, and then Margot Hill.
My name is Tom and I'm a water waster. Okay? I waste a lot of water in the summertime. I waste as little water as possible in the wintertime because I was born and raised in Spokane, but I lived in the city of Los Angeles for a goodly number of years. And they had a program that would be like an advanced version of what you're proposing now. But they issued tickets that cost more than $100 to people who ran water across their hardscape, across their driveways into the street. They were, they were pretty adamant about that kind of wastage of water, which I don't see in this ordinance where you have any warnings to people about wasting water. Now, I walk around my neighborhood almost every day and I see their sprinklers running to where they have a creek running down the gutter for about two blocks, then into the storm drain. That's a huge wastage of water, just trying to run their sprinklers on their parking strip in there. And they completely cover their sidewalks to where you can't walk without walking through wet. I don't do any of that. My problem is that I have a fairly large property in the east part of Spokane. And I have the equivalent of seven city lots. So I use, and I have more than an acre of grass. So I use a huge amount of water on that. And that's where I waste my water. Because I lived in LA, I turn off my faucets. I have low-flow toilets. I use almost the minimum amount of water inside my house, but I use a lot of water outside my house. So, and I've been paying two water surcharges. At one level, I pay an additional amount. And then at the next higher level, I pay an even higher amount. I've been willing to do that just to, because I'm a big water waster. But I'm starting to learn my lesson and I may not water near as much outdoors. Now, I'm in favor of this ordinance, actually, even though I'm a water waster. And I think I would, I would prefer something where you rat out your neighbors. Because I want, I want to see a big red ticket on somebody's house who's got all that water running out across the hardscape. I think those people are the ones you need to go after and try to educate them now as to how foolish their use of water is. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, next is Michael Townsend, and then Joanna Gilchrist, and then Margot Hill.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity. My name is Michael Townsend. I'm in
My name is Michael Townsend. I'm in support of the ordinance. I'm an owner of Townsend Cellar Winery over in the Chief Gary neighborhood. And, uh, we really support, or we do our best in our business to conserve as much water as we can. And we also support, uh, organizations in the community that do their best to, to, uh, support it as well. Many of these programs are things that the city has put funding behind and are incentivizing residents and businesses to enact. Spokane scape, the Spokane canopy, urban canopy program are great things that the city has put in place to incentivize conservation of our natural resources here. Specifically, the, um, the Spokane scape program in that it, uh, adds credits to people's water bills for changing their landscaping to more of a zero scape, uh, converting to drip irrigation and putting automated sprinklers or, or an automated watering timer on their sprinkler system. These are all good things and I believe this ordinance will help further enshrine the city's commitment to conserving water for the future and to protect our river and our ecosystems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Joanna Gilchrist and then Margot Hill.
Hi, I'm Joanna. Thank you for having me. Um, council members, proud citizen of the United States. Thank you God for all we have. Thank you for this great water. Thanks for doing your job. And, um, I, I strongly oppose this. I was wondering, Mr. Cathcart, what is, what is the proposal? I only was made aware of it this week and was wondering what the restrictions might be, et cetera. Our family conserves. I have a good-sized family. We, I hopefully have done my job as training my children. And, um, we love this country. This is, this, we are so blessed. And I, I strongly oppose it, but I didn't know if you were able to state what it is, the new restrictions? Did you, or the new proposal?
Well, I assume the sponsor is going to go through the ordinance before we have our commentary. So I, I'll leave it to her to describe it.
All right. Yes. So I, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, then Margot Hill is our last scheduled speaker.
Heo putis in kasihu, putis in kuali, putis lichalacht, fluie squest, Margot Hill, tsipani. Thank you, City Council, for letting me speak today. Our people, the swinhuamene, call this place of Spokane, skhet. It means place of fast-moving water. And I ask that you vote yes on this conservation ordinance. As the former Spokane tribal attorney, I was part of a team of people who put together the application for treatment as a state under the Clean Water Act. And the Spokane tribe put forward water quality standards. I'm a resident and I live here in the city and our family works hard on conservation, not over sprinkling. As a professor of urban and regional planning, my students are here. They map out the watershed and they work and, and look at smart growth and smart decisions for cities. As a mother, my children take part in the canoe journey and they paddle, uh, our, our waterways and our riverways. So I ask that you consider, uh, this conservation plan. The city has asked their staff and people from the city, business folks, uh, environmentalists, have, have worked on this, uh, conservation plan for many years. It's been hard work, uh, that staff has put into this. It's based on science. There are a lot of pressures on our city, on our resources. We know with the in-migration, the demographics, there are more pressures on our community for schools, also for water resources. We have, um, if we see, uh, a decrease in groundwater pumping, then we know this results in more groundwater discharging into the Spokane River. This is good for our aquifer. You know, if we drain our aquifer, the science tells us that the, the aquifer can collapse, that, that those important places that really work, um, to filter our water. And so it's so important that we protect. In our language, we say, uh, smet, shoot, mok, mok. There's snow on the wa, on the mountains. And that is the spring runoff that feeds our river. We have less of that because of climate change. We all know this from the wildfires. We breathe that smoke. It burns our eyes. We know that Mother Earth needs us to speak up. We know that the river needs us to speak for it, to fight for it. And this conservation plan, um, it's good for all of us just to do our part, to be responsible about using our water resources. And we think about the fish. You know, the tribes have been reintroducing salmon. And part of our economic vitality here in Spokane is our beautiful river. We are the river city and we've got to protect it. And that's conservation by all of our citizens. Lem lem shlichalacht ilumichum. Thank you, decision-makers, friends.
Thank you, Margot. Uh, that brings us to the end of our public testimony. I just wanted to thank everyone for all your testimony. It was all on point regardless of your perspective. And I appreciate the respect you showed everyone and all the diversity of opinion that you brought to us. And people were really speedy. We got through it about a half an hour faster than, uh, predicted because people were really on top of it. So thank you for that. And now we'll open it up to council commentary. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, if, if the sponsor's not going first, I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in. So, um, we've had a lot of commentary obviously tonight. And thank you, everybody, for coming down and sharing your thoughts. One of the things that was said was, uh, from our, our riverkeeper, um, simply be prudent, simply be wise, do not waste water. Well, I can't figure out about this ordinance is, are we trying to address an urgent concern? Or is it about a concern that's 20 to 30 years down the road? We've heard both as well tonight from different folks talking about this. If it's an urgent concern and we're trying to be prudent in how we address it, then this is most certainly not the way to get there. We have two years before there's any enforcement, so there will be nothing that happens for the next two years. My guess is, similar to the last year, most of you probably don't know, this is actually in effect right now as a voluntary measure. You've probably never even heard that. And so my guess is there'll be two years of silence and then suddenly bam, it's going to be enforced. Or the alternative to that is, we're going to amend this and amend it and amend it. Or just simply throw it out because we'll finally realize that this will not work. So one of the two is gonna, is going to occur. And if the urgency is that we need to save water and we need to save water today, then we should do something that's going to save water today. And I had proposed a plan that was focused on incentives that would start immediately, fairly immediately. And we could actually start to see people using their own, um, uh, reductions as a, as a means of, or, uh, try to pursue a cost savings through their reductions as a means of seeing this water usage go down. And I think that that would work so much better. It's not a heavy hand. It's not government coming in and telling everybody how you're going to act, how you're going to live your life. It's no, it's, we're going to give you the flexibility to save money and reduce your use, which benefits everybody. In my district, District One, Northeast Spokane, there are a lot of people struggling with their bills. And we're not talking about reducing their rates, not one penny. That was voted down this afternoon. What we're talking about is a ban on their use of water on certain days of the week, certain times of day, that sort of thing, with no reduction in cost. In fact, we're already talking about raising their water rates. Next year, mark my words, their rates are going to go up and they're going to have less service in the meantime. This isn't the way to go about this. We can, we can provide a benefit right now. We can encourage people to reduce their water usage right now. We can do that through incentives, through a positivity, not negativity, not criminalization, not fining people with, and threatening them with misdemeanors. We don't have the enforcement staff. We don't enforce real crimes today. We're not going to enforce this. And to do that, to, to get to the point where we could, would require a significant increase in labor. And we're in a pretty tight bind there as well. So there really is no good way for this proposal to actually get to the outcomes that we all want. We all want to reduce water. Why? Because it saves us on infrastructure. We don't need water towers or more water towers. We don't need a lot of this new infrastructure if we can save water. So it makes a ton of sense that we would do this. And we do have a lot more growth coming and we've got to find ways to accommodate that. But, but through a water ban that doesn't apply to the rest of the region who are also drawing from the same aquifer, just simply doesn't make sense. In fact, it puts us at an economic disadvantage if they're not going to also be, uh, following the same rules that we are. The other benefit of an incentive measure is that it would apply to all the ratepayers, not just some. And there wouldn't be special exemptions for some people. You know, you have a little bit more vegetation, a little bit more trees. Suddenly you get an exemption and the rules don't apply to you. Well, not everybody's in that situation. Some people, as we heard, have bigger lawns, have, you know, different configurations. It requires more water to get what, what they need done. It's a one-size-fits-all, top-down approach rarely works and it certainly is not going to work in this situation. We need to find ways that are actually going to get to what we need to accomplish. You know, big, big uses like swimming pools, not included in here. There's around 500 of them on the South Hill, 750 in the Northwest, about 150 in Northeast, just so you know. We're not, we're not enforcing this. I mean, effectively it would be a taking if we tried because swimming pool months are the months that we're considering the water ban. So effectively it wouldn't, that wouldn't work. But we're not talking about that. So how urgent is it that we're really trying to reduce the water usage? I think that's a serious question that we should all be asking. So I think that there is a better way that we can go about this, a more positive way. Somebody talked about trying to uplift people's spirits. Yeah. You know, quality of life's a big deal. And when you're walking around or driving around town and you see browned-out lawns, that doesn't make you feel good. That doesn't make the neighbors, the people that live there feel good. It frankly makes you feel the opposite. That's not what we want. I had submitted on our list of ARPA requests, uh, a request for some dollars to do, to focus on neighborhood cleanups. Why? Because when you start to do that sort of thing, it up, it's uplifting. People feel better. Their quality of life goes up. They want to do more to take care of their property, their lawns, their house, that sort of thing, which is, has an uplifting effect on everybody around them. The entire city benefits. So rather than a negative stick approach where we're essentially telling people how they're going to live their lives, being inflexible about it, let's take a positive proactive way of, of, of encouraging them to reduce their water, but also providing them a benefit and incentive, something that's going to help their pocketbooks. And for those that already have really small bills, this was brought up earlier today, you're already doing great work. And whether it's a water ban or an incentive, it's not going to change what you're already doing. We need to focus on the people who are using a lot of water. And if they're using a lot of water, they're spending a lot of money on water. So encouraging this and providing a year-over-year reduction is the better way to go, not through mandates. So there's a much better way that we can accomplish the goals that we all want to accomplish together. But this policy isn't going to get there. I, I do not believe it will be achievable. I believe we will throw this policy out or amend it multiple times. We've already had large institutions such as Spokane Public Schools coming to us asking for exemptions. That might be next up, another amendment to exempt them. Who knows? So if we're really serious about it, we can incentivize the reduction. We can start it now and we can move quicker and we can actually realize the reduction and just create a much better, more uplifting community rather than one that just pits neighbor against neighbor, creates animosity and doesn't necessarily benefit anybody's quality of life.
Who's next?
Well, I'm going to work on developing a, a three-step, uh, water waster reform program. So, uh, I'll have somebody help me develop that for the water wasters out there. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. This tonight really is, to me, a common sense approach. Don't water between, we encourage you not to water between 10:00 AM in the morning and 6:00 PM in the evening. It's every other day, over the next two years with education included. So it's not a beat-you-over-the-head approach. Councilmember Cathcart put a lot of stuff into his comments, um, the cost of water is going to be going up. Well, whatever's going to be going up, it's going to be labor. And we all know how that's affecting the economy right now. So I don't want to throw that in there that because you reduce your water, it's going to go up. That's not true. We are moving forward. It's foundational. It's common sense. We all want green grass. But you know what? There are people who can't afford to water right now. So we understand that. So there's some automatic reductions, but not because they want to, because they can't do it. So what can we do, our fair share as citizens individually? Because I can't control how much my council member's water. And this whole thing about, uh, your neighbor's going to narc you out and there's going to be this big fight in the neighborhood because your neighbor called and ratted on you. I don't think I see that coming immediately either. There are a lot of other things your neighbors could probably call on you about. But because you're watering your lawn, I don't think that. So I'm in support of this because it's just foundational and it's common sense. And it should not be impacting, uh, your quality of life that significantly. The numbers were ran. If we did this, you might save $2. So there's not a huge significant savings. So, you know, again, common sense, not draconian, not neighbor against neighbor. Just some common sense steps that we can take going forward.
Councilmember Bingo.
All right. So like everybody here, I care deeply about, uh, the river. I want to ensure its health and safety for future generations. I have a two-year-old son. Um, I know that the river is, is really the gem of the city and I want to, I want to take care of it. And I've, I've worked pretty hard over the last couple of weeks since this was proposed with Councilwoman Kinnear. And I really do want to thank Councilwoman Kinnear, um, for trying to protect future generations. I believe that your intent here is, um, a lot more education rather than enforcement. I really believe that that's what you're trying to do here. And so I appreciate that. As, as it is currently though, I can't support it and I have a, I have a number of reasons for that. So, um, just a couple of things that were, that were, um, mentioned, uh, neighbors calling and tattling. I was talking to, uh, Councilwoman Stratton today and she said that that was one of the things that happened all the time last year is that neighbors were calling on neighbors and tattling on them. But the result wasn't that they got a, a penalty, um, that the water department sent somebody out there for, for educational purposes. And I, I would hope that would again be the, uh, the process. But neighbors are going to call, um, on neighbors. That's kind of what we encourage them to do in these, uh, in these situations. Talking about lower bills, the bill that we were presented with today was a non-summer bill and what we're talking about is summer water rates. Water, uh, bills in the summer in these hot times when we do have to water more to keep, uh, yards green are significantly larger than they are, um, in these times. We see water usage charts up there and so the amount that they would save would be more than, more than a couple of dollars. It would be, uh, you know, a, a good amount of money that people can save. The other misnomer that we keep saying is watering every other day. This is actually incorrect. So our Level Two in this ordinance is two times a week watering. So not every other day. In the, uh, when we're not in a drought, uh, the suggestion is four times a week, which is slightly more than every other day. When we do reach drought, it's twice a week, which is not every other day. And that's an important distinction because only being able to water twice a week is significantly different than watering every other day. So here, here are my issues that I, that I have with it. I did submit a number of amendments, uh, earlier today. I rescinded them after speaking with, uh, Councilwoman Kinnear. But here are my, um, here are my issues. So number one, one of my big frustrations with government recently is it feels as if it's more important than the average person. This has certain exemptions for city properties that it doesn't have, uh, for, uh, you know, the citizens of the city. That's a problem for me. I don't think that the parks are any more important than my yard. I think that if my yard's supposed to be brown, I think that the park should also, uh, be brown. I, I don't want the parks to be brown. I want them to be beautiful and vibrant. And I, I think that we should continue to work on that and water them appropriately. And I, again, thank Councilwoman Kinnear for her efforts on upgrading irrigation systems, finding leaks and doing those kinds of things in the parks, uh, to keep them there. The city property is no more important than any citizen's property. My other issue in here, and by other, I mean, I've, I've got a list of them, so get comfortable. We define a drought much more drastically than the state's Department of Ecology. So in here, we define drought based on 1,000 CFS. There has been years-long work going into this. I am only a couple of weeks deep. So I couldn't define for you what CFS means. What I do know is that we say 1,000 when the Department of Ecology says 850. Now, the difference in this is, you know, it might seem like 150. That's not all that much. As we were diving into the data, I was only able to go through July and August. In July and August over the last 35 years, we would drop below 1,000 CFS, 25 out of the 35 years. So that means that we'd be instituting our Level Two measures in 60% of years, just in, uh, just in- So that means that we'd be instituting our Level 2 measures in 60% of years, just in the years that I was, or in the months that I was able to go over. Excuse me, 60% is too low. It's actually 5/7ths, so it's over 70%. But in essence, if we take every month into it, this is going to be, we're going to be in a drought year based on our own definitions for all intents and purposes every year. So that means that this isn't a drought response measure. This is a new normal for the city of Spokane. And what that's going to mean is that you can only water your yard twice a week for the foreseeable future, based on our definitions here. Not only is it just 1,000 versus 850, this is not even a measured amount. This is a predicted amount. We're not, it's not even based on measurements. And so if it's just predicted to go below 1,000 CFS, we institute these Level 2 measures. One of my other issues that I have with this is that we do limit the times in which people can water. We have some of the poorest neighborhoods in the state, you know. Sprinkler systems are not things that are guaranteed in my district. We did hear a number of testimonies tonight that people have to move their watering stations. If you only have so many, you know, hours in the day to be able to do that, it restricts the ability for people to water their yards, particularly up in my district where we're going to see some inequitable impacts. And this could result in struggling neighborhoods, as we heard other testimonies about that tonight. Green yards do lift the spirits. They absolutely do make a neighborhood look nicer, as opposed to a, you know, a golden, as I know we like to call it, golden yard. It just lifts the spirits in the neighborhood. We do prohibit the usage of watering on hardscapes like sidewalks, patios, porches, driveways. There's a number of good reasons why we would want to be able to rinse off sidewalks, or driveways, or decks, or porches. You know, there are animals that live in the area. Sometimes they leave behind presents that we don't want on those areas, and there needs to be a hygienic way to clean it off. We don't want people cleaning those things up with their hands. It needs to be able to wash those things up. In Level 2 drought measures, that's going to be banned. In the Level 1, it's suggested, but in Level 2, it's going to be banned. Not to mention that a number of our downtown businesses are dealing with, unfortunately, human presence, and we need to be able to clean those off. We do have some penalties that will be instituted. Like I said, I believe that the goal of the city would be education over penalty, but the penalties can kick in in a couple of years. I think that we do need a more robust educational experience before we move on. Like I said, this is not an exhaustive list. I know it felt like exhaustive, but it's not an exhaustive list. I think there are a lot of reasons why this could be made better, and I believe that with the attitudes on the council and the attitudes, you know, of the administration, I think that we could find a way to get to a place where we all are working towards conservationist efforts. One of the things I proposed was, the reason why I changed my watering habits is because I do have a nice yard. Senski comes and handles all of my stuff. Sorry, I apologize, but they come and they handle my stuff. They came out and they gave me an education on watering habits and what was good. And I was able to change mine, save some money on my water bill, and actually do a better job of what I was doing. And had we partnered with some private companies and done an educational video, I would have happily been in the video to help educate the community, because conservation is what we all want. And so I appreciate the efforts towards conservation. I don't think this gets us to where we're going. And so for those reasons and many more, I'll be opposed to this tonight.
Thanks. Councilmember Stratton.
Okay. First, I want to clarify, absolutely, I got, I don't know where anybody else was last summer, but I got calls every day, and it was people telling on their neighbors and telling on city parks that were watering at 2:00 in the afternoon. But it wasn't mean-spirited. And in fact, I enjoyed those conversations, because you could tell these are people in neighborhoods, and some weren't even in my district, that cared about that water being wasted at 2:00 in the afternoon on a 108-degree day. So I had absolutely no problem with what happened last year. In fact, I was incredibly gratified to know that people were starting to pay attention to what we were doing during those very hot, hot days with just wasting water. So it's been on my mind since last summer, and I think I want to kind of take my comments above all of the words. First, I want to say that councilmembers received a letter today, this afternoon, from the mayor, saying that she's going to veto this. And I find that unfortunate, because I think we could have maybe had some better conversations with her, but we've been told that she will veto it. I want people to know that. But here's the bigger thing, is that I've been sitting, we've all been sitting in this room together for a couple of hours. I'm so impressed with the comments of every single person that spoke, whether you agreed with this or you didn't. Because what it said to me, what everybody said to me tonight is, "Our river is important. Our water is life, and we have got to face the challenges now to save the next generation." So with the way the world is right now, to be able to sit in a room with people that agree and disagree with each other, to know that this is one issue we all feel very strongly about, thank you, because it doesn't happen that often. And I know that people get emotional over this, and people get frustrated, and people think that government is taking over and that we're bullies. But what I want people to understand is, this is a few years of really hard work. Kara Odegaard has put her life and soul into this project, into these numbers. Councilmember Kinnear, Council President Beggs, this isn't something that they just woke up a week ago and said, "I think we're going to make people criminals if they use too much water." So I guess my point is, somebody said earlier that we need to do this together. And what I would like to say to people is, this probably isn't perfect. I know there's a couple of things in there that I kind of went in councilmembers' proposal that I went, "Oh, I could see that. I could change that." But you know what? If we all got together and could agree, which I think we do, that the river, the water, our environment, it's important to us, and we want to do something collectively to be positive for the next generation, I'm in. And I think this is something that we could all rise above the political and the philosophical ideals and differences, not put something as important as our river in the middle of that, and look at it as more of a human issue and an environmental issue, and a very important issue for our next generation. So I would ask all of you, no matter what happens with the vote tonight, no matter if the mayor vetoes it, we don't have the votes to override the veto, no matter what, we all care about our river. And thank you, Margot Hill, from the Spokane Tribe, for being here to help us understand that. So whatever happens tonight, I feel, you know, I've connected with all of you that have spoken, and this might not be the best, but I know we have the council up here that can look at this and pass it and say, you know, maybe we do need to change this, or maybe we need to, you know, but we're really trying to make this right and make it work. So please know that I take this issue way above the politics and the egos. It doesn't, there's no time for that. We've got to do something with water conservation. We've got to do something to honor and protect our river. That doesn't fall into any political ideology for me. We just need to, as human beings, move forward and make good decisions, conserve water. And it doesn't hurt to call, I don't mind the phone calls reporting your neighbor for watering at 3:00 in the afternoon, because I get to know you and talk to you, and then I get to call utilities, and I know that they send somebody out to work with that resident to say, you know, "This isn't the best time to water. We could do this, and this, and this," and really work with those folks. So whatever happens tonight, thank you. Make this a moment that we are all in one room, that we agree on something that's really bigger and larger than all of us. And together, we'll work together and make this work, no matter what happens. But we'll do it for our river, for our ancestors, and for generations to come. So thank you.
Councilmember Zepon.
Yeah, I'll go next. So yeah, thank you, everyone, for showing up and testifying and staying till the bitter end with the rest of us. And I want to thank everyone who's been working on this for a long time. So I know that this has been years and years in the process and the works, and it is an important moment, and that's why a lot of people are invested on it. It was not something that was quickly thought of overnight, or anybody that was taking this decision lightly has been doing. There's been some talk about the incentive program, and I just want to lay out really quick why that won't really work right here in Spokane, is because our water is really, really cheap. And so if we look at the average baseline, the summer, or of the winter to the summer, of how much our water consumption increases, it is only going to save the average person, the average household, $2.76. That's not enough to make an impact on someone's usage. In the winter, it would only save them about $0.34 a month. Again, that's not enough to make an impact on their usage. So we have to look at different ways to do it. I believe the work that has been done addresses a lot of the concerns that were brought up. This includes an education period and an outreach program. It has a phase-in period. Nobody would ever get fined until after a direct one-on-one contact with an education program attached to it. So there's a lot of education in this, and I think that is incredibly important for our community. And also protects our common spaces that are for the common good. And these are assets for our community where everybody can come and enjoy them, even if you live in an apartment where you don't have access to a lawn, which is a true equity issue that people, thousands of people, don't have access to green space, period. And it shouldn't just be those who are in houses. Also, this allows for equitable access with the Waterwise rebate that the city has. So if you don't know already, the city has a great program for you to get access to timers to attach to your outdoor hoses, so that you can set it up at the times outside of the period, so you don't have to water during the day. You don't have to be attending to your lawn all day long. So I think this does a lot of the great work that we're trying to do in our community. It is about common sense reforms. Don't water during the day. Don't water when it's the hottest point of the day and 50% of the water evaporates. That doesn't help our community. So this, to me, is about changing what we consider normal, what's common sense and was normal, and that's to protect our river, to protect our aquifer, and to protect our future.
Councilmember Bingle.
Councilmember Zepon is absolutely right that the city has rebate programs that are pretty, that offer a lot of things for individuals. And if you didn't know about it, you should check them out. Quickly on the timers, the timer is great if you have one station. The timer is great if you have one station. If you have several stations and the timer doesn't really help you being able to water your entire yard in those times. So that's the one caveat to that. That was just a quick point there.
Councilmember Kinnear.
My turn, thank you. Everybody's been so eloquent, so I kind of feel like, oh, I hate being second to last. I appreciate everybody coming, sharing their thoughts, their experiences, their passion, because everybody's very passionate about this. Margot Hill, I so appreciate you coming down, giving us historical perspective. That's very special, so thank you. And Kara, I wonder if I could just ask you a question before I dive into. Could you come up just for a sec? And it was mentioned several times by folks and then some of the councilmembers about defining drought, because I heard that Department of Ecology has defined it differently. I looked up that we're in a moderate drought, according to NOAA. So can you help us with that, how we're defining that?
In the ordinance, Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
In the ordinance, we took a look at the river as a determinant of where our city's water situation is. We looked at the data across over the last 20 years, and basically, it did show that on most years when we were hitting that 1,000 cubic feet per second threshold earlier in the summer, we were soon following, later in the summer, reaching that 850 cubic feet per second threshold that is defined by the Department of Ecology. The reason we chose that is because if we wait until we reach the 850, it's too late, and we're already losing prime habitat for our river ecosystems. We're also below what the, all the recreational guidelines show us that we need in the water that we need in the river in order to have a healthy recreation.
And so recreation is defined by the kayakers, whitewater.
Correct.
Flyfish or people.
Yes.
Timber tubes, whatever.
Anybody who recreates honor in the river.
And then, now, that's the mystery solved for Councilmember Bingle. Cubic feet per second is your, duh-duh, okay.
Councilwoman Kinnear. It doesn't clarify, though, why Ecology has set it at 850.
That's not a drought. Ecology set that as the in-stream minimum. So they looked at only, their purview was not economic, so they didn't look at the recreation. This is how I understand it. I'm not an expert in that particular decision. But what they did look at was what the river needs to have a healthy ecosystem for fish primarily, and they looked at native species. So the 850 is the minimum we need to keep in our water in order to have a healthy fish habitat, healthy habitat for the plants and animals that depend on the river.
So the delta is for recreational uses?
So are you asking me why we chose the 1,000?
Yeah.
So we chose that 1,000 threshold, the cubic feet per second threshold, so that we would have time to respond during the summer months when we were experiencing drought, to not go below the 850, which is the minimum we need in the water in order to keep our fish, our ecosystem, healthy. The recreation piece is separate.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Don't go too far.
Real quick, I guess I would ask, then, in the ordinance that we're proposing, how many years, what percentage of years do you think would be considered drought, and then we're instituting these Level 2 measures?
Yeah. I am sorry that you're asking me that, because I don't recall. So I don't know what data you were looking at, and I can't tell you without having a look at the data. I do know that we're consistently not meeting our in-stream flow minimum, but that's the 850, so.
So I guess my question then again would just be, in your opinion, how many years should we be in these drought response measures, in your opinion?
In my opinion, we should not be in them ever. That's the goal. I mean, this ordinance is set up so that first, we're looking at conservation, and then we're looking at drought if needed. And so we have to make difficult decisions, right? Do we want to protect the ecosystems of our river? Or are we going to worry about four days versus two days of watering? That's my opinion.
Well, I think people are going to worry about four days versus two days. That's the thing that we have. And so I guess if our intent is to do that every year, I think maybe we should just be honest and say we want to do this.
That's not the intent.
Okay.
And it is not every year that we are experiencing a drought, a river drought.
Right. Not every year, but a good percentage of the years.
You have the data in front of you, then?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
I was just, since we're talking on that, just wanted to clarify, the way I read the ordinance is that it doesn't be, it's not for the whole year that you're there. It's just during that time period when the water's there. So for whatever days. And it also is only triggered when either the mayor or the council declares it, and they say, "We're going to go into this mode for the next two weeks," or something like that. So it's not just happening all summer or anytime.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So Kara was one of the folks who has worked so long, so hard, along with many, many groups, regular citizens, my assistant Jacoby, and experts over a year and a half to come up with all the data and actually get to the point where we are tonight. We received over 265 emails in support, and I'm talking about we, me and Councilmember Wilkerson, 265 emails in support of this ordinance, 28 against. The ordinance went through several graphs and coordination with our Public Works Department. In the end, it's simple. Don't water between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. We're not asking you to water then. We're asking you not to water then. And four days or less. So those are the basics of this ordinance. There are no penalties right now. We're taking the next two years and doing outreach and education, and last year, we did the same. Last year was voluntary. Last year was voluntary and Kristin Davis did a great deal of outreach and education, as did other people in the Water Department. So, we've carved out exceptions for vegetable gardens. So, the person that was on the phone talking about watering zucchini and so forth, that is an exception. That is food. Community gardens, vegetable gardens are important to keep and maintain. We also have an exception for trees. We do not want to lose our tree canopy. Ponderosa pines will be fine without water in the summer, but deciduous trees, not so much. And new landscapes. So, if you're going to install a new landscape, even a Spokanescape, it's going to need water for the first few months. So, that is a carve-out. In terms of the incentives, we already have them. Spokanescape is one of the incentives. We also offer 10%, so the top 10% low-water users get a reduction in their bill right now. And we also have low-flow faucets, toilets, all of that, meters, et cetera. We're in a moderate drought right now according to NOAA. So, we need, that is why it is, in my opinion, an emergency. We need to get this started right away. We had a cold spring, so everybody's saying, "Hey, we're not in a problem. This is fine." But we're not talking about spring, we're talking about summer restrictions when it gets hot and it's dry. So, again, going forward, this is about education, this is about changing culture and how we look at our river and our aquifer. It's not bottomless. Somebody said, "Well, it's, we have billions of gallons of water." Yeah, but you have to get to it. And the deeper we have to go, the more expensive it is for the ratepayer to fund that infrastructure. So, it's down there, but we have to get it. So, I am obviously supporting this. I was one of the co-sponsors. I so appreciate your talk, when you talked about this is above politics. It absolutely is. And we're all coming together to say this is important. So, thank you for saying that. So, I'll turn it over to council president.
All right. So, again, thanks everyone for coming. And I think depending on who was talking, you heard kind of a different vision of what this ordinance is. And I encourage you, if you get a chance, if you haven't recently, look at it online to see what it is. Because it is, it is not a ban, it doesn't criminalize any conduct. It is setting the norm for what healthy watering is of the yard in order to keep a healthy river. That's what this ordinance is. It sets the norm. It says, "This is the law and the policy of the city of Spokane. Four days of watering a week, which is about every other day during the week, and don't do it in the middle of the day." That's what the norm is for most of the summer from June 1st to October 1st. So, it is, the idea is, because we went back and forth, do we want to create a water police department? And we said, "No, let's do a norm." And much like we do speeding in our neighborhoods, you know, we have a speed limit of 25. We don't have signs in the neighborhoods. Everyone knows what it is. We don't have police very often in the neighborhoods. Now, there's often a person that's just speeding down the road and we wish there were enforcers out there. But for the most part, once everyone knows what the standard of behavior is, we work together as a community and we keep our children safe and pedestrians and bikers and strollers safe, and we do that, so we don't have to do that. What this ordinance is designed to do is make a norm for the city of Spokane and hopefully the whole region. As you saw up there, many other places in our region are going in the same direction. We just need to change the culture. It is not, by the way, it's not a banning water, it's not getting rid of green lawns, it's not getting rid of vegetable gardens and trees. So, I heard a lot of colorful language, "Oh, we're going to have brown lawns." That's not, four days a week is generally not going to give you a brown lawn in this community under most weather situations. So, we're not talking about that. What we're talking about in this very modest proposal is setting some clear and simple guidelines so that we don't waste water and then we keep that water in the river. And as you saw from the graphic up there, when we pump water in the middle of the summer when it's the hottest, it lowers the river volume for the fish, for the kayakers, for just looking at and swimming in, it lowers it. This is just about changing that norm. And one reason incentives right now are going to be challenging to do just by themselves is that if you don't change the norm, the amount of money is kind of a small amount and you're not going to really get there. The only way we really get there is that if the vast majority of people water in this way. Many of you, I'm sure, in the room, no matter which way you feel about this ordinance, are already doing it. But we're talking about tens of thousands of households that we need to change and get to that place. And it does not have to be painful at all, according to the landscapers that I've talked to. So, that's what we're working towards. There's no, again, we made specific language, it is not a crime. It is a crime to violate other parts of the water ordinances that are out there before this, but this is not a crime. There's no fines. In a year and a half or so, we're going to look at what ways can we do to support people adopting this. One of the ways that was mentioned previously were surcharges, but we haven't adopted that or that. There's no fines that we have talked about doing. There are ideas about water rates of having higher rates for the super-users. We did a little bit of that a couple of years ago, so we might look at that. And we can also look at those incentives. Those incentives are on the table. Whatever our Public Works Water Department tells us is going to be effective, that's what we're going to be looking at. And hopefully, soon, we're going to have customized real-time water meters. So, you will know, much like you can check in on your furnace and see what's going on, you can check in on your water usage and in real-time figure that out. So, we're going in that direction. There are ways to clean sidewalks without just using a blasting hose, and I appreciate that that problem, I don't think that's the huge problem throughout the whole city, but there are ways to do it with a bucket and some water and rags and gloves that can keep you safe. On parks, a lot of people have said, "Boy, this doesn't seem fair if the parks don't have to follow the rule." They actually are supposed to. They are moving in that direction. But I would suggest that parks are a little bit different than just my house, and that's because parks serve everybody, people who don't have yards, people who do have yards. It's there, so it's important to do that. But our parks are on a long-term plan of being wiser water users. They're putting in, we have funded, and they're putting in systems that can do every other day, and they're doing that. So, they're going to get there at some point. And I agree with everyone who says the government should be leading on this, and I believe we are and we should lead more. Most importantly, I think everyone agreed that we need to do education. And one of the things that we put in this latest version of the draft is it requires the Water Department and Public Works Department to do robust and more education. If there's any critique, and I've heard it from some people, is we didn't do much last year. We changed the standard, but we didn't do much. It wasn't an ever-present educational campaign. And we need to put more money into the water educators and we need to have more money for the incentives for people to change their landscaping and educate them. So, we need to do all those things, and this ordinance ups that. And I look forward to the administration joining and partnering with us because they've said that they really want to do that because they know not only will it be better for the river and the economy, but they're looking in the face of tens of millions of dollars of new tanks and pipes and pumping systems that we don't have the money to do. And that means we, the ratepayers, will have to pay that. So, this is an attempt to get ahead of that curve, not just to protect our river, but to save us all money in a system that works better and has enough water for fire suppression in the summer. So, I want to thank particularly the Water Resource Collaboration Group and all the people that they worked with, and the Water Department and Public Works are working so closely with us. And Kara Odegaard, of course, all my council members that have given input and pushed on this, and all the staff members. I think Spokane, we're simply going to set a new norm for a greener and bluer day for all of us. And with that, please prepare to vote. All right, so that passes 5 to 2. And that's the last thing on our agenda, but we do have open forum. There's some people who want to talk to us. And I think I'm going to start with our, we have one phone person signed up, and that's Dave M., who we heard from earlier. And Dave, if you're there, if you want to hit star 3. And please keep your conversation down until you get outside the room. Thank you. Dave, if you want to talk in open forum beyond water, you might have signed up twice for the same thing. Hit star 3 if you want to talk. All right, folks, if you're talking, please talk outside the room. All right, not hearing from Dave. Then next is Rick Bochuk, followed by Kim Schmidt, followed by Tanya Comstock, Anwar Peace, and then Tom Robinson.
Yep.
Now, Karen, don't take offense when I use the word Karen.
I won't.
This is kind of funny, but it's not funny, you know? I was at the library today and I'm going to kind of throw a little bit of sarcastic humor here. You know, I think you should take the library, you know, the computer place, the chairs are about what these are like right here, you know, back-to-back, they're about that far apart. So, I'm sitting at the, I went through three computers and they were closed down, and I go sit in this one computer, and this person, we call him Karen's, okay? Yeah. The first thing she tells me is, "You need to move. You're in my space." I was thinking, "Okay, lady, I'm going to sit here because this computer's available." All right. But then, now here comes the stereotype. "I am a homeless POS. I'm a drunk. I'm a drug addict. I'm worthless. I'm a loser. Constant banging against my chair. We don't, I need to get out of her space." This is a Karen.
Yes.
Not you, Karen. But this is what I had to deal with for about 20 minutes, so I'm going to say to sit, "Now, you guys need to get on the libraries and you need to take and take care of this Karen person. We need to have bigger space for them." Okay? So, I do, so that they won't harass the people that, and stereotype the people like me, who would just go to the library to get some pictures so I could do some good chalk art out here. That's all I would do. So, just wanted to share my story of what I had to deal with today. And then I got to worry about this, you see, because they will play a victim. And then I got to worry about that because then all of a sudden say, "I'm a bad guy." Well, anyway, the security finally came over there and she told the security that I needed to move to. Fortunately, he took my side and said, "Well, no, these chairs are set up the way they are, you know, you can't make them move." But this is what I had to deal with today. Now, you know what a Karen is.
Now, I know what a Karen is.
All right. Thank you, Rick.
I'm Karen.
All right, it looks like Dave has raised his hand. Dave, are you still there? Dave, welcome back to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Just to let you know that the automation does talk in your ear while you're also talking. But I have nothing else for tonight. I appreciate the council listening to everyone, and that's all I've got for tonight, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. All right, next, Kim Schmidt, and then after Kim would be Tanya and Anwar.
Well, good evening. In more Spokane-related breaking news of the day, Pastor Ken Peters has announced that Pastor Danny Green will be taking over Patriot Church, which was formerly Covenant Church and TCAP Spokane. Spokane Patriot Church will now be considered a network church instead of a campus church. In plain business language, network is considered a franchise. Campus churches in the Patriot Church network are directly under the supervision of Ken. Spokane Patriot Church will now be paying Ken to use the name Patriot Church. I'm sure you all recognize the name of the new Patriot Church pastor. He's been in the area for many years. He's been very active in the so-called "Back the Blue" local rallies. He's also been an active participant in Spokane's TCAP. He's spoken at numerous of them. In fact, just before the April TCAP began, April of this year, Green instructed those in his recovery program to walk down and join the TCAP protest as the number of attendees that had already shown up were pretty slim. On a personal note, having worked for many years as a drug and alcohol counselor, I find that incredibly disturbing as clients in a recovery program are at the mercy of the program's leadership. One can assume that not every client supported the TCAP ideology and theology and were coerced in participation. Another serious concern of mine is that with Ken Moore in the background, the TCappers will attempt to, once again, push the boundaries of the judge's injunction. I would hope that by this point in time, the police officers are assigned to monitor TCAP and will be well-prepared to enforce the injunction. Consider yourselves knowing more. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. And Tanya, come on down, after Tanya is Anwar, and then Tom Robinson.
My name is Tanya, and I wanted to speak about the homeless people. They need to build more low-income apartments real quick, you know, because there's a lot of people that been going around asking people, you know, to stay with them, you know, lately, like I did before. And I got, I got evicted from my apartment, too. And I was, and I was wondering, too, if landlords are allowed to tell their tenants, you know, if where they can put their drinks at in their own apartments, too. Because that's what my ex-landlord did, and she evicted me, too. Because she thought that I had people living with me, and I told her that my boyfriend had his own place, too. And she didn't, it seems like she didn't hear me, too. And I think, I think someone from here should get like the landlords together and get like the tenant law, tenant's law, you know, and show them, you know, what they can and cannot do to their tenants. Because I had some things fixed, needed to be fixed in my apartment, too, but they didn't want anyone, anyone to come fix anything in my apartment, too.
All right. Well, thanks for telling us, giving us that update.
Yes.
I hope it turns out better than it's been.
And I need them some help, too.
All right. Thanks, Tanya.
Oh, yeah.
Anwar? And after Anwar is Tom.
My name is Anwar Peace, Spokane resident and a 22-year police accountability expert. Last Tuesday, the Spokane Police Department announced to the media that it was now requiring the use of the Eastside Library in the East Central Neighborhood for a new police precinct due to public safety concerns, which is odd because during the community process that the East Central Neighborhood went through about this, what should happen to the East Central Library, SPD never lobbied the neighborhood about this new police precinct plan. On top of that, some city council members that represent District 2 weren't even consulted or briefed about SPD's police precinct plan, nor were they briefed by the city administrator before the press conference announcing the plan for the police precinct. I'm not opposed to a East Central police precinct. In fact, there might be indeed a need for the precinct if there's data that supports that need. But SPD hasn't done a geo-policing study to determine where police precincts should be located, as well as whether the old Eastside Library should be converted into a police precinct, and would that in fact benefit or enhance public safety in that neighborhood. A geo-policing study is a study that looks at the geographical policing needs of a community, which is done by looking at service, calls for service, and miles per service, staffing shift needs and overtime, as well as adequate placement of police precincts. The Seattle Police Department around 2010 did a geo-policing study that in fact happened before the Department of Justice Consent Decree took place. And that very geo-policing study found that supervision of officers in Seattle was well before, below the national best standards, which drew alarm bells from the DLJ. So, Spokane needs to go forward with the geo-policing study in order for the community to get a true understanding of what our city's public safety needs are, which in fact, this process might actually raise alarm bells with the DLJ as well. Furthermore, the Eastside Library Police Precinct Plan wasn't a part of the East Central Neighborhood Plan that was presented to the city council, nor was this neighborhood consulted Neighborhood Plan that was presented to the city council, nor was this neighborhood consulted on this precinct, police precinct plan. Plus, the police policing plan was not part of SPD's 2022 strategic plan, nor was it part of SPD's budget as well. So if that's the case, then the voices of East Central Neighborhood now must be heard on this matter, as well as they need to be at the table every step of the way. Because without us, or because nothing without, because nothing without us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anwar. All right, Tom Robinson.
I live in East Spokane, and I used to use that library at Fifth and Stone almost daily. And my opposition to having a police precinct there and then also trying to have mental health services there, it just isn't going to work. There's a lot of persons who have had negative interactions with the police, and they won't go near where they see police cars parked. They just, that's not going to work for them. So if you're thinking about co-locating there, I don't understand why you're going to try to put a large police presence out of about the 3,400 block of East Sprague and that old insurance building. That's only about a mile from this former library. And I don't understand why the police need to be located right there. There has been a police officer at that location for some time, but that doesn't mean it has to be there again. What I really came to talk about is, in the news, there was some discussion about that warehouse shelter that's going in on East Trent. And here's what Mayor Woodward had to say about that. Woodward said the city plans to connect the people staying at the tent encampment, meaning Camp Hope, to the shelter and its services. Should they choose not to go, Woodward said it will be their decision. When asked for her response to residents who say a big shelter will not fix the problem of the tent city, Woodward said, if the shelter has the bed space, it can be used as a tool to prevent them from camping. Now, that's exactly what's been going on with that. A huge building with a lot of bed space, not bed space, mats-on-the-floor space, is it very much is the mayor's intention to be able to attack people all over Spokane who are living outside. And these people, there are women who wake up, have been victims of domestic abuse and wake up screaming in the middle of the night. They've been trespassed from other shelters already. They aren't going to be able to move into a shelter with 300 people sleeping on the floor. Veterans with PTSD have the same issues, where if anybody gets near them, they wake up ready to fight and defend themselves. They can't, they can't stay in that big building. There need to be a variety of shelters. And every one of you council members knows that, and it should be glaringly apparent what the mayor's motive is in building that big warehouse building. It's exactly that.
Thank you, Tom. That brings us to the end of public forum tonight. I want to give a special thanks to council member Kinnear for holding the fort down for me while I was gone.
And we had so much fun.
Yep.
She did a great job. You should have seen the amount of six L votes. You should have seen it.
Yeah. I paid him to say that.
Yeah, no. I really appreciate it. My family and I had a great time together, so thank you for that. Thanks, everyone. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. We're adjourned.